Dan Jacobson, who in turn I think will be introducing Doug Pryor from Bartell and Associates. Good evening, Dan and Doug.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. As you mentioned, this is Doug Pryor, Vice President and Actuary at Bartell Associates, so he will be helping me with the presentation. We will sort of tag-team this, so I'll start out with some agenda and background. He will go into some deeper dives, and then we'll finish up with actions that can be taken. So we'll start off with the background and current state, primary causes of unfunded pension liability, which is one of the main concerns, future cost projections, potential actions, and then recommendations and questions. So first of all, why are we here? The first thing is city council direction. So we received periodic assessment by an independent actuary. The most recent prior to this was May 2017. We incorporate the projected CalPERS cost increases into our 10-year forecast every year as we do prepare the budget. And city council policy is to set aside 25% of operating surplus toward the Strategic Pension Reserve. In addition, during the summer of 2018, there was a civil grand jury report called Soaring City Pension Costs: Time for Hard Choices. There were a number of recommendations included in that, including public hearings and development of a long-range plan to manage those pension costs. So just to highlight, not only for your benefit, but of course for members of the public, why this is important. So pensions are a significant annual operating cost for us. In 2018-19, we anticipate spending $5.1 million or 7.6% of the general fund budget. For miscellaneous, there are 208 active members and 223 retired. And on the safety side, there are 43 active and 116 retired. CalPERS pension benefit is the standard retirement benefit for public employees, at least within the state of California. That is represented by 1,579 public agencies, including the state itself. And Menlo Park employees don't participate in social security, so this is the only defined benefit pension plan they have, unless they are in other systems as well. And just to highlight that many of the drivers are largely outside of the city control. So investment earnings are, at this point, anticipated to be where 61% of retiree benefits are generated. Demographics are outside of city control, and assumption changes are as well. So one of the main things that we talk about is unfunded accrued liability. So this is a liability of earned pension benefits, which are greater than the market value of the assets. Primary drivers of the UAL are investment losses, benefit enhancements, CalPERS contribution policy changes, and demographic changes. And to go into a little bit more detail, I will turn it over to Doug, who's going to get deeper into the weeds about some of these drivers and some future projections.
Welcome, Doug.
Thank you. Good evening. So we have, to start off here with the first slide, history of investment earnings with CalPERS. The jagged line there is showing the return on market value. And the flat line there is the discount rate they've used in the valuation. So that discount rate is supposed to reflect their long-term return on assets. And it's kind of hard to see from the graphic there with the lines jumping around with the returns versus the discount rate. But if you look at the red line, what that shows is a 10-year average of the return on market value of assets. So what you see there, if you just compare the red line to the flat line, is over the last 10-plus years, the average return, as measured by a 10-year average of the market returns, has been below their assumption. So a lot of volatility, obviously, but more importantly, returns have been below what CalPERS has assumed over the last 10-plus years. If we move forward, to have a little background on the benefits before we get to some numbers here, the city has really, for miscellaneous and safety, each have three pension tiers. For miscellaneous, the tier one is a 2.7 at 55 formula. City implemented the 2 at 60 formula for tier two miscellaneous early in 2012. And then the final tier is the Pepper formula for miscellaneous. Safety, you have the 3 at 50 for tier one. The tier two, 3 at 55 formula, was implemented at the end of 2011. And the final Pepper tier is there, too. We have the naming convention there, FAE1. That just means that in the benefit formula, the earnings that are used, if it says FAE1, it's the average of the highest single year that's used in the formula for tier two and for Pepper. Pepper by law mandates that you use a final three-year average in the pension formula. A brief, very brief history we have in the packet. There's, I think, a number of pages on the changes that have been made by CalPERS over the years here. This goes back really, on this slide, just to 2013. And the reason for that is, before 2013, CalPERS was doing a great job of smoothing contributions, but not such a good job of actually reflecting what you might call reality. And so what happened before 2013 is that with the asset losses, as we were, investment losses that were seen on the earlier slides, sort of came in. CalPERS wasn't having agencies pay enough to pay off the unfunded liability. Effective with the 2013 valuation, they put in, they got rid of their actual value of assets. They'd been basing contributions on kind of a value of assets that was above the market value. They went to market value. And then to avoid having a big jump in contributions, they put in this ramp-up methodology. So when they went to change the methods in 2013 valuation, what you see there is that it first impacted 15, 16 rates, but the full impact is still yet to be seen. That will happen in 1920. So it's not quite like this, but if you had a contribution that was meant to be, you know, 10% of payroll, rather than starting you right at 10%, they would start you at 2%, go up to four the next six, right, and ramp you up to the 10%. And that policy has been in effect since 2013. And not only is the original change back in 2013 still continued to, has not yet fully been impacted in rates or brought into rates, but you see the discount rate changes there at the bottom of that slide, as they're transitioned down to 7% discount rate. The full impact of those changes aren't really going to hit until '24, '25. So as you'll see later, when you look at contribution rates increasing over time, it's really due to this basic policy that they've implemented. Another slide on historical data for about a 10-year period. The blue and green, the first bar there on each slide, are the, the blue is the active employees, the green are miscellaneous employees. I'm sorry, I have that backwards. The blue are miscellaneous employees, and the green on top are safety. And then you have the darker green in the second bar are miscellaneous retirees, and the red, safety retirees. So the first bar is really total employees of the city, second bar retirees. So you can see, if you look, kind of follow the top of the red, the red, second bar there, the red, you can see a significant increase over the 10-year period, as more and more retirees have come on. What you also see is kind of a flat, a flat schedule there in terms of employee count. So you're now in a position where you have a lot more retirees compared to your actives to pay for the, you know, that you need to pay for benefits for people that have already left the city. Unfunded liabilities, we, first slide here looks at the miscellaneous plans, is based on the June 30, 17, CalPERS actual valuation there in the right-hand column. These numbers are based on the 7.25% discount rate, because that's what they've used in the valuation. They are ramping that down in the next valuation to get to seven. But we see there, June 30, 17, is $125 million actual accrued liability, assets of about $95 million, and unfunded liability for the miscellaneous plan, about $29.9 million. And you can kind of see the change there from June 30, 16 to 17. In terms of the unfunded liability, it was $32.2 million in the 16 valuation, dropped to $29.9. Primary reason for that is actually, it was a very good investment return year. That year, 16, 17, was 11.2% investment return. So the unfunded liability on this plan dropped, and the funded status actually increased, again primarily due to the investment return. We look at safety, similar numbers here, similar relationship, the right-hand column there, June 30, 17, is a 7.25% discount rate, $93.9 million accrued liability, $69.3 million in assets, for an unfunded liability of $24.6 million. Same thing here, it's funded status, well, actually, the unfunded liability looks like it has increased slightly. On the safety plan, there were investment gains, but the, on the safety plan, the payment was not sufficient to pay kind of interest on that unfunded liability. So the unfunded liability actually increased over the period. Moving to the, we have one slide here on the safety unfunded, I'm sorry, this is miscellaneous unfunded liability, going back to 2013. We've kind of broken out the components of what generated the unfunded liability here. But really, the, I think the point to take away from this, from this slide is, you know, if you go back to June 30 of 13, the unfunded liability was, I don't know, somewhere around $22 million. And as you look at it in the most recent valuation, June 30 of 17, it's closer to $30 million. So one of the main reasons that this occurs is because you have an unfunded liability, and CalPERS is continuing to ramp you up to pay kind of a full payment on the unfunded liability. So it's similar to a mortgage, where you're not paying interest on it, a credit card, where you're not paying interest. If you don't make payments to pay the principal down, the balance grows. So that's, that's kind of what's happening there with the increase in the unfunded liability. If we move forward, this is now getting into the projections we prepared for contributions. We've started, I suppose, since this, with kind of a bad scenario here, so let me, let me maybe back up and explain a little bit with, about how we developed these. I guess the way I say is, we've included everything that we kind of know about the city's plan and what we think is going to happen in the future. And that means that we've included the impact of hiring lower-cost Pepper employees in the future. We've included that we think, over the next 10 years, investment returns are going to be lower than the, than the 7% that CalPERS is using in the valuation. And in this slide, we've actually also included, this is, we've done a, based on some outside investment advisors, a survey that we've put together. We've kind of developed a model to determine how likely it is returns, where returns will be in the future, in terms of likely ranges. This slide here is showing technically a 75th percentile return. So we're saying this is, if, to not be technical, we're going to show you a 25th, 50th, and 75th percentile of the return, which is really going to be kind of what you might think of as a good, I'm sorry, as a, as a good scenario, kind of the expected scenario, and a bad scenario. This is starting off with the bad scenario, where you see the contribution rates as a percentage of payroll, starting out at about 20% of payroll, and over the next almost 15 years or so, escalating to be above 25% of payroll. The other thing I should mention that's included in here is the employee cost sharing. Yep. So you have employees paying certain percentages of the city rates, for both miscellaneous and safety. These numbers here are net of those, of those cost-sharing agreements. So if you look down, now this is now a bad scenario, but you might think about it, it's a 25th percentile of the returns, I'm sorry, a good scenario. And you can see the contribution gradually declines to around roughly 10% of payroll over a 15-year period, roughly. The, so it's kind of a good and bad scenario. And then the middle, that's really where we expect you to be, is that thick line there in the middle. So it's, CalPERS has a policy in place, in terms of how they're amortizing the unfunded liability, that will, you will pay off the unfunded liability. Before that change they made in 2013, there really wasn't, I would say, an appropriate schedule to pay off the unfunded liability. Now they do have that. So you'll see, although it's a long ways out there, the unfunded, the contributions will come down over time as the unfunded liability is paid off. And you'll see a similar, similar graphic is when we move forward to the safety.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Does this, the fact that the rates, or the projection decline, does that also take into account the, what I call the Pepper effect, where, you know, you have newer employees and a greater portion of the employees are under Pepper, and, and therefore their normal cost is lower than some of the retiring employees? And is that factored in this?
Yes, that is factored in here. So it does factor in future hires being brought in under that Pepper formula. Not all of them, because some of your future hires will be the tier two, right?
Right.
But we have a, an assumption built in to grade that out, so that, you know, the people, the new hires you have a year from now are much, much more likely to be tier two than they are 20 years from now. They'll almost all be Pepper, right? So we've, we have an assumption to sort of decline that. So ultimately, over about a 15-year period, all, all employees eventually will be Pepper hires. So it is built in the model. What I didn't explain, another thing that is built in here, is CalPERS has this policy called a risk mitigation policy, which is really targeting to invest the money more conservatively over time. And that, that, that approach is not on a set schedule in terms of how they're going to adjust the investments over time. It's based on a policy whereby, in years with good, good returns, they're going to change the investment policy. So we've also built that into this. So really, if you look at this projection, we're starting off with about a, with a 7% discount rate. We're also assuming that that's going to drop to 6% over about a 20-year period. So that's built in here. And part of the reason your question kind of triggered that is because what does happen is with Pepper, if CalPERS was not changing the discount rate, what you would see is your normal cost rate would kind of decline over time, because the Pepper people cost less than the tier one, the tier two people, right? But with the risk mitigation policy, what you have is, yeah, your Pepper people are cheap or less expensive, but on the other hand, CalPERS is going to be lowering the discount rate, bumping the normal cost up. And so if you look at a tier one or tier two person today versus a Pepper person 20 years from now, with the discount rate change, there's not a huge difference in the normal cost. And so you might, normal, without that policy, you would see a steeper decline here. So we, and those are all percentages of payroll. This is then a projection that shows dollar amounts, where we've broken it out by the dark blue is the normal cost payment, and the light blue is the payment on the unfunded liability. And these are in thousands of dollars. So for 2019, the contribution expected to be about $4 million, and steadily increased to somewhere a little under $7 million by the fiscal year 2030. The blue line there is the cost-sharing piece, that we expect employees will pay based on the current policy going forward. The total here in this, in this graphic is not net of the employee contribution. So if you, if you want to look at net city cost, you would take the height of these bars and reduce them by the, the height of the line in each year, to get the net city cost. These are all, I talked about good and bad scenarios earlier, these are all on kind of the expected scenario going forward, in terms of the middle-of-the-road investment returns in the future. So we have a number of slides now that repeat same sort of information, but now for safety. This is, again, with the safety employee cost sharing, and kind of with all the things that I'd mentioned that were built into the model, but this time for safety. And this is the kind of pessimistic scenario, currently, the contribution at about 50% of payroll, and this expected, under a bad pessimistic scenario, to reach almost the mid-80s by 2034. And this is the optimistic scenario, if you will, where rates are going to, would come down quite a bit, and, or steadily come down, I suppose, and by somewhere around 2044 or 2039, get pretty close to that normal cost payment at that point, with the unfunded being paid off. Ultimately, that is where we expect you to be, is right there in the middle, with significant, as you can see, increases in the contributions over the next, I don't know, almost 20, 20 years here for safety. Those, again, were all percentage of payroll. These are dollar amounts. Here, similar graphic, normal cost, dark blue, light blue is the payment on the unfunded liability. And you can see here, fiscal year 19, about a, a little over $2.5 million expected payment by 2030, a little under $6 million on the payment. It didn't point out, but you have the similar thing on miscellaneous. I mean, if you look at the color of each bar, obviously, the, the big, the reason it's increasing is that payment on the unfunded liability. The normal cost does, does come up a bit over the years, even as a dollar amount, but the significant growth here is the, is the payment on the, on the unfunded liability.
Okay. So now that Doug has kind of gone over some of those factors that got us here, and what we can expect in the future with the status quo, I kind of want to talk about some of the factors that are within and outside the city's control. So factors that are outside the city's control are the investment strategy, that is controlled by CalPERS, the market returns, which are, of course, controlled by the market, benefits paid to current and future retirees, that is, benefits already earned, and then actuarial assumptions, so demographics and all those other factors. Now that said, there are a number of factors that the city has control over. One is continuation with CalPERS, that is, continuing the contract with CalPERS as it is currently. Supplemental payments to CalPERS. So there are a number of possibilities to make additional payments to CalPERS, whether on an individual, one-time basis or ongoing. Of note, these would affect the 10-year forecast. So we have included in the 10-year forecast, as currently done, the schedule that CalPERS has for us now, which is a 30-year amortization schedule. That could also affect the non-pension cost reductions, depending on what assumptions are put into the forecast and budget in future years. Rate smoothing policy and mechanisms. So there is the possibility that, rather than targeting total dollar amount, that the city targets a rate smoothing policy to shave off some of the peaks that Doug presented earlier. And there are a couple different mechanisms for that. The city does have the employee cost sharing and payroll growth under its control as well, too. And that is whether the agreement does currently stand and payroll growth into future years. And then legislative advocacy is also an option. That was one of the things highlighted in the grand jury report, was that they recommended the city's take up legislative advocacy. So I do want to highlight several actions that the city has already taken. The city has been generally quite proactive compared to other cities. The city has implemented multiple classic tiers. So as Doug mentioned, new transfers who are already CalPERS classic members are cheaper than the tier one employees that we have now. Cost sharing with employees, so all employee groups, all regular employees do share a percentage of the city's employer rate that goes to CalPERS. The city has a policy to save some of the surplus every year. So that is the Strategic Pension Reserve amount, with 25% of the surplus. This estimated $4.6 million is as of June 30, 2018. That is an unaudited number, but includes the surplus from 2018 and the previous balance. The city has also taken actions in the past to pay off obligations, such as the safety side fund and other post-employment benefits. So in the grand jury report, it mentioned reducing other competing costs. These would fall in that category. The city has regularly pursued independent actuarial evaluations, so having a better understanding of what not only CalPERS says should happen, will happen, but what another, a second perspective, a second opinion on that. And then limited payroll growth. So this has been the case over certainly the last couple of years, that payroll growth has met CalPERS' expectations in COLA. And so again, those items here highlighted with an asterisk are the ones that were identified in the grand jury report as potential options. So options for consideration for the council at this point include development of a policy for the use of the Strategic Pension Reserve. So while we have, we have set aside the funds in the Strategic Pension Reserve, there is no policy at this point to use those funds. That would be how to use those funds, when to use those funds, what mechanism to use. Supplemental payments, whether that's a single payment or multiple payments to CalPERS, as mentioned before, that can be a single, one-time payment. It could be regular payments, and it could actually be an alternate amortization schedule. So we currently use a 30-year amortization schedule, which is the CalPERS base, similar to what you might imagine a 30-year mortgage as, but they have options for others, such as a 20-year or 15-year. One of the things that Doug mentioned was a lower discount rate. He said the expected discount rate, 20 years in the future, is going to be 6%. So we could use a discount rate which is somewhere lower than what CalPERS has, the 7% going forward. We could establish a Section 115 trust. So a Section 115 trust is an irrevocable trust, which allows greater investment returns on money invested in it, but can only be used for pension obligations. And a few options that the city does have under its control, but which have substantially higher risk, are ending the contract with CalPERS, though that requires a buyout of the current contract. The price tag on that is $259 million currently, so that one is a very difficult one. The Fresh Start Amortization Schedule is a possibility. So this would be changing that 30-year amortization schedule to a much shorter one. This is irrevocable, so it involves a great deal of risk as well, whereas supplemental payments can be made voluntarily. Using a Fresh Start Amortization Schedule means that the, that schedule must be followed. And then the last one on there is pension obligation bonds. These could, of course, be issued, but given that Doug has pointed out that eventually this will be paid down, that is probably one of the riskier and more costly options So at this point, I would like to open it up for any questions that you have, whether there are clarification questions perhaps about the mechanics of CalPERS retirement, some of the main drivers of UAL, perhaps getting back into the stuff that Doug mentioned, or future projections.
So is that the bulk of the presentation? I just wanted to make sure that this wasn't just getting input or questions before going back, or did it cover most of it?
Okay. We do have just one, one more section, which is staff direction, but we wanted to make sure that there were no clarifying questions ahead of that.
Okay, I got it. So you're asking for clarifying questions at this point? Okay. The, well, first of all, let me also, we might have public comment on it, and I want to make sure that we are, do we have any public comment cards or questions? Okay. So certainly want to encourage anyone, if you have any questions, to submit your cards to Judy here on this. All right. Clarifying questions. Trying to understand this concept about supplemental payments. So back several years ago, we paid down our safety side fund in 2011, to the tune of something like $7.5 million out of reserves. It was relatively straightforward to understand at the time, because it was, because the side fund was, had an assumed 7.5% return. In effect, we kind of looked at that as a interest expense that we were getting charged by CalPERS to
by CalPERS to amortize that side fund over a, I think, like a 12-year period. And as opposed to our reserves earning a half a percent under life, the analogy was, you know, if you're carrying, you know, high interest debt, you might as well, but, but your savings are not earning much, you should pay down, you know, that. And, and that had a very significant impact of lowering our, this was on the safety side. So it lowered our safety rates from something like 32% down to 24%, and we saved a considerable amount of interest. Is the concept similar with supplemental payments? Do you have that same sort of, you know, return? Do you get credited that 7.25% interest rate that, that CalPERS is assuming on the return if you, if you make the supplemental payments or not? There. Am I back on?
Yes.
The side fund is really a specific example of how you can pay down your unfunded liability. When you give CalPERS extra money, they actually need to know how to, how to basically give you credit for that money in future contributions. And by paying down the side fund, you have this side fund and CalPERS say, well, you pay it down, we eliminate that, those charges that are associated with it. You have multiple what they call bases in the valuation. And additional payments you make to CalPERS, you have the option of selecting which base to apply the credit to. So it's completely analogous to the side fund. You just have more options in terms of which, how do you apply the credits in the future? When you pay off the side fund, there's a specific, as you're saying, a 12-year payment credit, 12-year charge that you eliminated. The, if we were to look at, and this was in, in the presentation that was attached to the staff report, a 6% interest, or 6% assumed return as opposed to CalPERS 7%. What would that mean in terms of annual contribution, either in dollars or percentage? Yeah, so if I could say, well, I'll look for that number, say one thing upfront about that. The way they're invested today, if they stayed invested in that manner, we would expect long-term they would get 7%. We also expect that over the next 20 years, they're going to change that policy and the return will be lower in the future, right? But what that means is that if things go as we expect, they might get 7% this year and a little lower next year, and by 20 years out, get 6%. And so if you average all that out, you wouldn't get to a 6%. Okay. Right?
Right.
Right. So it will probably be long-term, it might be even with that policy, the risk mitigation policy that they have in place, it might be you get to six and a half long-term rather than six. I just want to mention that. Now, now I said that, going back through to see, I can't remember if we included that. I know we have the unfunded liability at 6%. Yeah, I don't think, I think we only have the unfunded liability, but we could calculate, obviously, the, the payment associated with that, if you, if you'd like that information. Okay. Why don't we come back to that? I just, is there, Vice Mayor Mueller, did you have a clarifying question?
I just have, actually, a resident submitted three questions, so I'll just ask those. First question is, what is the cost of a long, what's the long-term cost of hiring a new employee today?
Well, that's, so first of all, it will depend on whether or not they're PAPRA. So let me, I'm going to take you a step back from that. You hire a new employee today, it doesn't add to the unfunded liability, right? And what you're really seeing with your contributions is, the issue is paying off that unfunded liability. So people hired in the future, you're not adding on to that unfunded liability. In terms of the, the cost, it really will depend on whether or not an employee is PAPRA. And I think in the, in the document, trying to get to that page. So a new hire comes in, the cost is really just the normal cost, doesn't add to the unfunded liability. Normal cost, this is not a great answer, but it varies anywhere from, you know, roughly 6-plus percent for a PAPRA miscellaneous employee to almost 22% for a safety tier one employee. I guess you're not getting any safety tier one, so the upper end might be somewhere around 19% of payroll today.
Thank you. Second question is, what's the cost of hiring a new employee who's post-retirement? So if CalPERS is underfunded, does it increase, is there an increased charge to current employees for someone who's coming back post-retirement?
So this would be someone who retired from here or this, or another city, and then is hired back by the city?
Right.
So it would be, I believe, the same as any other new hire. Those benefits that were accrued with prior agencies are being paid by those agencies, and they'll come in with, with the normal cost payment.
Okay. And then the last question, and this is something we've talked, we've talked about at council a lot, that trying to get some clarification around. What's Menlo Park's obligations to an employee who leaves Menlo Park for another CalPERS-affiliated job?
Yeah, so in those formulas that I showed very early on, like the 2.7 at 55 formula, right? If an employee has five years of service here with the city and leaves and retires at 55, they'll get five times that 2.7% times their final pay, right? And the only way that their employment in a different agency impacts the city of Menlo Park's liability is that in that benefit, the pay at the other agency will be used in the formula. So what's known as reciprocity. So there's no additional benefits accrued, accrued, they don't get additional service with the city, they will have their benefit calculated based on the individual's pay at another agency, if it's higher. If it's, if it was higher here at Menlo Park, then it, then there would be no change. But ultimately, their benefit will be based on the highest pay, which typically would be with the final agency, which in this case would be, you know, not Menlo Park.
Okay. Now, I have a question. You said between 2013 and 2017, the unfunded pension liability grew because in essence, it was something about we weren't, it was like we weren't making a payment on an interest-only loan. And my question is, is that something that we can do going forward? Will we make the payment on the interest-only loan? So it doesn't, so it doesn't belong?
Yeah, I think if your question, you could certainly make higher payments to CalPERS. If you look at where your contributions have been in the last five years, you'll see a significant increase in those contributions. And you might look at that and wonder, well, why the heck are we still increasing from there, right? And the, the reason is, is because those payments, as I was saying, typically did not cover interest on the unfunded liability. You could make additional payments. You could calculate really from the report, you could say, well, here's what CalPERS says our unfunded liability is, you know, what's interest on the payment? We want to make at least that, or we want to pay the unfunded liability over a 20-year period and amortize it. So you, you have flexibility certainly in how you contribute.
Give me an idea what that would have been, what that number would have been interest-wise in 2017, if we wanted to do that? I'm, I'm trying to figure out how big of a hit to the budget is that?
Off the top of my head, unfortunately, I don't know. I'd have to go back and look, but I could easily get that information.
If you could, and provide that to the city manager, that's information I'd love to take a look at.
Sure. So you, a 20-year payment, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
If we wanted to go ahead and start taking care of that now. Thank you.
Councilmember Keith?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I just have a couple of questions. Can you go back a few slides where you put the options available for, yeah, consideration? And just to look at that, I mean, some of the things are just, like you said, are probably not realistic. And I want to, the end contract with CalPERS, the cost of that is how much? Did you say 259 million?
That's correct, yes.
Yep, $259 million that we would have to pay to end our contract with CalPERS.
Correct.
So that's not really very likely. Do you know of any cities that have done that? No. Nobody does that because CalPERS makes it extraordinarily a high payment for anybody to do that because they're discouraging any cities from doing that, right?
Well, they also do it because they have to calculate the total amount of benefits that they will pay out over the rest of the accrued time for those people that have earned service, and they can't expect any more payments from the city, so they have to invest very, very conservatively. So they use an extremely low discount rate.
Which is what? What's the discount rate they use for that?
So it's based on high-quality bond rates, so they invest in like government bonds to sort of match the cash flow. If I, if I could add a little bit, look, CalPERS is investing with a 7% return, you know, target. What happens is, if you terminate, they, they, they want it, they do it so that they could, they would never come back to you for another dime. And once they, if that, once that's their criteria, right, they say, well, we have to be sure we can pay all these retirees out, and we can't afford to invest the way we have in the past. And so they go out and invest in these high-quality bonds to ensure that they'll be able to pay the benefits. So the lower discount rate, if they can never come back and collect another dime from you, I think is, is justified. It makes sense. I think maybe where it's a little less clear is why CalPERS can't have you leave the contract but continue to be liable for the, continue to make payments to the extent the assumptions aren't met in the future. But they take the position that they'll never be able to come back to you to collect another dime, and so you have to pay this huge premium to ensure that the benefits are paid.
Right. And so no, no city's done that, right?
I think there may be one or two out there, but very few.
Yeah, it's very, very rare. It's just, it's too expensive. And then some of the things that we've always been mindful about doing are trying to find non-perceval, you know, compensation mechanisms. And that's something that we have looked at for the last eight years. And then I wanted to ask you, on the fresh start amortization schedule, who's done that?
So I'm trying to think if I could come up with any examples off the top of my head. I don't know that I can. So they, and I think this has been talked about, but if you take, if you take your amortization scheduling, say, CalPERS fresh started at 20 years, and they move your contribution up to X, and two years from now, the market doesn't do so well, and you've got a much higher contribution than you want, you can't turn around and say undo it. You can't go back and say, no, we don't want 20 years, go, we're, go to 25. So they won't let you undo that. So my recommendation on this is always that because they, they, they do it that way, if you want to pay on a 20-year schedule, just don't tell CalPERS.
Just do it yourself anyway.
Yeah.
Right. Don't, don't make it formal, just make the payments.
Right, right. Exactly.
And you don't need to make it formal, is that right? No?
No, you don't.
Yeah, okay. And then just another question on, when, somebody is here in Menlo Park, this is a question that was kind of touched on earlier too, and they're here for, say, five years, then they go to Sunnyvale, or Redwood City, or any number of other cities, and they get a higher salary, and they, let's say they retire from that other city, the city of Menlo Park is responsible for whatever rate that they're getting paid in the city that they have moved to.
Right. And that works vice versa, right? If someone's at Sunnyvale, and they, they work here at 55 and retire at that point, they're, the pay that's used for the Sunnyvale benefit that they pay is based on Menlo Park compensation.
Right. I guess what, we've seen lately, though, is that's not the case. It's been the other way.
Okay.
And so the point of that, though, is that when we, we see that, for example, we'll train people here, and then they leave and go to another city and earn more money. And that, what the city needs to understand here is that we're still liable for whatever that increased rate is wherever they go. Correct?
Right.
Right. And so that's important to note, so when you're, when you're trying to figure out salaries for people and how to engage people to want to stay. Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. So I have a few more follow-up questions. On one of your, the slides, you also talked about lobbying CalPERS. What, I, I think I saw it as a bullet point on there. Does that, I'm trying to understand what legislative advocacy, thank you, that was probably a nicer way of putting it than. Would that mean, for example, trying to lobby CalPERS to introduce a defined contribution plan, because obviously, all their plans are defined benefit, not, not defined contribution? Is that what you mean by legislative advocacy? And if not, is that, is that an option that CalPERS would ever entertain to introduce a defined contribution versus defined benefit? Yeah, I, I don't know. Hard to say what they would entertain. I mean, I think there are a number of areas that, that new legislation perhaps would, could help a number of agencies. I mean, for, for employee group, once you're in CalPERS, you know, you, you cannot, you, future hires have to be included in CalPERS. So you can't say, okay, for everyone who's here at the city today, fine, they get the CalPERS benefit going forward for, you know, a defined benefit, a defined contribution. Right. Everyone who comes aboard has to be, I mean, because as we just talked about, the penalty to get out of CalPERS is just not, not an option. Right. I'm suggesting one, one thing could be that you could stay in CalPERS but just not include future hires, right? You can't, you can't even do that. Not, not that you, you know, there's the, the penalty, if you want to call it, for, for withdrawing from CalPERS, but you can't just say, well, look, okay, future hires, we're going to do something different, they're not going to be members of CalPERS. CalPERS say, you can't do that. So, so, so there are things like that that potentially could, could help the withdrawal liability, the termination liability that we're talking about. I mean, if it could just be structured differently so that, like, you have, you have that liability in terms of, there would be certain benefits that are paid from, by the city, or from the city's plan, whether you're continuing to have a relationship with CalPERS or not. It seems like in that scenario, you could, it would seem to me to be a reasonable setup to, if there's legislation to permit you to basically withdraw from CalPERS, but have them continue to invest the money the way they are, and just have a, and then they would have on, you'd have ongoing contributions, right? But you'd be able to eliminate future hires if you wanted to do that. I think, as Dan mentioned, you know, for a city like this where you don't have people in social security, there's a lot of, you know, benefits considerations there to just go to defined contribution for a few hires, for new hires. That's kind of a whole additional complication. But, but anyway, bottom line, there are a couple of examples of maybe things that could be done at a legislative, legislative level that might help. And I think that's important because I think, you know, one of the issues, if we try to do just something ourselves, then we are at a hiring disadvantage relative to other cities. I mean, that's, that's just the, the...
I mean, that's, that's just the reality of this, of this market. So in many ways, doing something on the legislative level that then Calpers rolls out or applies that, that helps to keep the playing field level, I guess. So, so the point of all this is that I would welcome suggestions for areas of legislative advocacy, and would encourage the future mayor to consider, consider submitting that, you know, as a letter or something to our, whether it's the assembly, or assembly member, state senator, or, or Calpers themselves. So I'll just mention that quickly. The, the other question I had before just finishing up on the guidance is this question about you, you advise many cities, not just Menlo Park. Where are we relative to other cities? I look at the, on the, based on the current 7% interest rate, and I see the percentage of unfunded liability at, I think you had something like close to 70%. Did it, I know that might have been on miscellaneous. How does that compare with, with where other cities are? And I ask that because I know nearby cities are taking potentially some dramatic actions. Redwood City is talking about a pension obligation bond, which I would never, I would never advocate. It's, it's expensive, it sets a long-term, you know, liability issue. But it's sort of exchanging one liability for another liability. But, and I know that the Finance Committee in Palo Alto had talked about last year that potentially their unfunded liability is in the hundreds of several hundred million. But I think they were talking about it a lower return than the 7%. Where, you know, based on what you're saying, where are we in that?
Yeah, I don't know if it's good or bad news, but you're, you're not that different from what most agencies are facing. You might actually be, you know, a little better off because you paid off the side fund, right? So you, I think you've made some additional payments. But the numbers we see with the, where the contributions are going are very similar to what we see for, for most, most cities, most agencies across the state. So, you know, I don't know if that's, the good news is you have company. The bad news is the whole state has this, this problem that they're dealing with, right?
Okay. Did you want to put up one last slide, and then, and then I'll give you?
Yeah, so the last thing that staff is asking is simply for a direction, in particular, when and how to use the Strategic Pension Reserve, and whether we should return with suggestions for that, and then budget assumptions, and whether we should continue to use the status quo, or how and if to change those budget assumptions.
Okay, I'll, I'll provide a couple of comments, and then invite my colleagues to provide some comments. So my concern is, it's hard to do this in a vacuum without looking at our entire projections. I think we are in a better position than most cities because we're seeing between some new hotels openings, some new, and increases in property taxes. We have already put in our base 10-year forecast, we have factored in increases in, in Calpers rates, and still shows us having something like a $2 million surplus relative to even factoring in the increasing rates in like the 2023, '24 fiscal year, for example, which I think is the peak for the near, as far, for what we've been told by Calpers. On the other hand, the thought that all of that's going toward paying, paying Calpers as opposed to all of the, we also have the competing needs of some key infrastructure in our city, whether it's the Middle Avenue underpass, it's other projects that could benefit Bellhaven Library, right? So we have this, we, we need, you can't just look at the pension question, and how do you do that without looking at, at everything else and the competing needs. And so I think it would be very helpful to, to have you working with our staff to try and figure out what, and to come back to, and I would suggest perhaps the Finance Audit Committee to look at, to come back to them, and then ultimately to us, or to the next council with some recommendations here. Because it's hard for me, you know, there's, there's one side that says, all right, if it's, say, we want to add, we want to pay down the unfunded liability by 20 million over 10 years, and, and so roughly 2 million a year we want to put aside. Well, that now takes away 2 million from what potentially could be 2 million that could be going to the Bellhaven Library, or what could be going. And so we want to be able to, on the other hand, we're seeing that potentially that we may have other sources, or also the shape of that contribution rates, as you mentioned, may taper off after that. It's hard to, it's hard for me to say, you know, right up here, oh, this is definitely the course of action when, when we're trying to judge. I, I do think we want to, we would like to see some sort of proposal on addressing the unfunded liability over, I would recommend, over a 10-year period, at least making a, some progress on that. But when and how to do that is something that I think takes more analysis, particularly in light of we've got the increasing rates, we've got a lot of things going on over the next five years. Let's see if we can figure that out. Now, I think the right thing is to continue with this 25% policy of our surpluses going to the Strategic Pension Reserve. I also do think it's worth us investigating this Section 115, but I don't know if the returns there are anywhere near what would be expected, you know, and versus, versus paying, making supplemental payments. So that's another trade-off, right? Did I get that right?
Right, yeah, I don't, we, I think you're going to get a higher return in general with, if you give the money to Calpers, but the reason to put it in the 115 trust is because you do control the investment, and you do then have the ability, if you look at those contributions that are ramping up, to sort of store money up to pay, to pay that off in the future. We can certainly do, we've done some, we can do more detail on that. But I agree, probably long-term, you get a higher return given the money to Calpers, but there are budgeting reasons and other reasons to consider the 115 trust.
Okay, so, but I look at that 25%, at least as a start, not, certainly not the end. And that's, that's where I think we would benefit from your input, and really looking at the pros and cons of how to use that 25%, and whether or not we need to supplement that in light of either, whether that's because we want to move to, to 6% earlier, faster than Calpers, to help us calculate what should be the supplemental payments, or, you know, or make some assumption in terms of trying to increase or decrease the unfunded liability. That's hard to, to say, and welcome, very much welcome your input. And then Dan has done an amazing job in this base case model. And, and would love to have, encourage, just so that you could sort of see the, the shape of the, of how our revenues look. And the, because I do think there's an opportunity here, but also I'm trying to make sure that we're able to address infrastructure needs, and I've gone way too long. Vice Mayor Mueller, sorry.
Well, I just wanted to thank my colleagues for helping frame this issue up really well. Obviously, with the election where it is at this point, what I would, if those results hold up, what we're going to need to do is take all of that information, put it into a good concise report. I think what will be happening is that there'll be an onboarding taking place with new council members. Certainly, we'll have at least one. We need to get them up to speed, and then determine what to have, what happens next. More than likely, I think, probably at some point in the early part of next year, we're going to, it would be smart to go ahead and get consensus on how to move forward and that. But I think that's going to be really important. You know, obviously, we're very lucky to have you here with us this evening, but to capture that information and an education process with the new council members is going to be vitally important. Because ultimately, even if we asked for a report back tonight, it might not be the same people up here when it, when it happens. So, but thank you very much, I greatly appreciate it.
Councilmember Keith?
Yeah, thank you for this. I think it's always good to have study sessions on this topic because it is one of the topics that will, will really influence our budgets in future years. And, and not just our city, but all cities up and down the state of California. I think we were wise in putting away this 25%, and I would like to hear information on what kind of a policy or proposal you would recommend, so we could have a discussion, for whoever's up here, you know, to have a discussion on that. Because there is 4.6 million set aside at this point. There'll be more probably after the next budget. And it would be really helpful for, for the city to understand what your professional advice would be on how to use that in the, in the, you know, best manner that we can. Because I don't think, not all cities are lucky enough to have this kind of surplus to try to, to deal with their pension liabilities, and we are, because of decisions that we made. So I think getting your professional advice on that would be really important. Thank you.
Great.
So just to clarify, I heard essentially staff needs to bring back recommendations, but no change to the status quo at this time?
I'm sorry, Dan, I didn't hear that very well.
Just to clarify, you are seeking staff recommendations in the future, not at this time, and no, no change to the status quo?
Correct.
Right, we can't, we couldn't make a, we couldn't make a change right now because it's not set as an agenda item to do that presently.
Okay, thank you.
But I think that it is clear that we'd like to have information on how you would recommend using that 25% surplus. That would be helpful for the city to know.
Perfect. All right. So thank you very much. We've completed the study session. We will now commence the regular session of the Menlo Park City Council meeting for November 13th, 2018. As I mentioned earlier, I'm Peter Otaki. Welcome to everyone. I'm honored to serve as mayor this year. I'm going to call the regular meeting to order. Over to my right is Councilmember Kirsten Keith. To my immediate right is Councilmember Rich Klein. To my immediate left is Vice Mayor Ray Mueller. Over at the table is our interim city manager, Starla Jerome Robinson. And welcome to your first new resumed meeting, I guess, so. And our city attorney, and our city attorney, Bill McClure. And I will mention that, I believe, well, in, over to this side is our city clerk, Judy Heron. I'd like to mention for, in addition to welcoming everyone who just joined us to the regular meeting. If you would like to speak this evening, we, I'd like to ask you to fill out a card. There's public comment cards in the back. And please put on it which agenda item that you'd like to speak on, and give that to Judy. And Judy will organize it so that we can make sure that we accommodate you on the, on the relevant topic. I also, Judy, as I understand, if I'm seeing on my notes, Kat will call in later, correct? When we get to that particular item? Okay, great. All right, with that, if I can ask you all to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay. For, so next section is public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address, or political jurisdiction in which you live. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. And let me switch over to, okay, so we have a few speakers here. Fran Dean, the CEO of our Chamber of Commerce. Welcome, Fran, followed by Laura Moya. Fran, good evening.
Thank you. Excuse me, Fran Dean, Chamber of Commerce. Unbelievable. Next week is Thanksgiving, and the cold weather's coming. With all that's going on around us right now, fires to the north and south, the homeless and less fortunate in our communities, and the seasonal temperatures dropping, now more than ever, we, the more fortunate, can help those in need with a simple coat or article of warm clothing. Throughout the years, the Recology Coats for Kids program has been the distribution cornerstone for many of our nonprofit service organizations, and they look forward to your donations of coats or clothing for their clients. As part of the distribution program, I can speak firsthand on how greatly appreciated this program is to all those in need. Please consider donating a coat or two, or some article of warm clothing. Go into your closets at home, search for that coat, or an article of clothing that's been hanging there for some time, not being used, and donate it to the program where I guarantee you it will be used every day. It doesn't matter what it looks like, what color it is, or what size it is. It will be greatly appreciated. By this simple gesture, you'll put a smile on someone's face, and you'll kept, you will have kept someone warm this holiday season. Collection containers labeled Coats for Kids have been placed at various locations throughout participating cities, and at Recology's office, where coats can be dropped off now through November 16th. At the end of this annual drive, Recology will deliver all of the donated clothing to local nonprofit agencies for distribution to those in need locally. The drop-off locations near us are the Ariaga Family Recreation Center at 700 Alma. Hours are Monday through Thursday, 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., Friday, 8 a.m. to 5 p.m. West Bay Sanitary District at 500 Laurel Street, Monday through Friday, 8 a.m. to 4 p.m. Or the Menlo Park Chamber of Commerce at 1100 Merrill Street, the train station, Monday through Friday, 9 a.m. to 4 p.m. Thanks all in advance for your participation, and have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much, Fran. Laura Moya? Good evening, Laura.
Good evening. Thank you. Hi, my name is Laura Moya, and I'm here representing Hip Housing. And on behalf of Hip Housing, I would like to thank the Honorable Mayor and the members of the Menlo Park City Council for your continued support of our organization. And as a token of our appreciation, and a reminder of our ongoing partnerships throughout the years, I'd like to present to you today Hip Housing's 2019 calendars. I know it's something that we've done in the past, and we're excited every year to be able to present it to you and the community. And this is the 17th calendar. Hip Housing has created, filled with information on Hip Housing's affordable housing programs, and as well as children's artwork from students from kindergarten to fifth grade. The children drew a house, and they explained what my home means to me. And we're lucky enough today that we have Delaney, who's one of our winners, with us here today. And she's going to actually share with all of you her picture, in addition to her coat. So I would like to introduce Delaney and her parent, Jamie, to come up and share her picture and her coat with us today, if that's okay.
Welcome, Delaney and Jamie.
Home is the most important part of my life. It is love, warmth, family books, games, food, and laughter.
Well done.
Thank you so much, Delaney. Lastly, I just wanted to mention, then, in a research conducted by the county, it was found that, that, um, that housing is a really, a real big challenge in this county, and 63 percent of San Mateo County workers actually live outside of this county. And so Hip Housing, through their affordable housing programs, is one of the solutions that's offered to families, seniors, and workers in our community to be able to live in this county. And I'm sure all of you have noticed that traffic is a real big issue in this county, and one of the ways that we can help reduce that traffic is be able to help individuals who live in this county also, who work in this county, also live in this county. So that, so I ask that you can tell, continue to help us spread the word about our program, given that for about every four people looking for a room to rent, there's only one person offering their home, and so I encourage you to share the word with other people in the community and continue to support us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Laura. Yes, please, I want you to provide it to Judy, and she'll distribute it out to us. Thank you. Look forward to it. Okay. Do we have any other speakers in public comment? All right. Next, we will have a commission report from the Sister Cities Committee, and Sister Cities Committee Vice Chair George Yang will make a presentation. Good evening, George.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Otaki, Vice Mayor Mueller, and Council Member Keith, and Council Member Klein. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is George Yang. I'm the Vice Chair of the Sister City Commission. It is my honor today to represent our committee and make a report about our progress and ongoing work. For, for our continued mission is to foster cultural, educational, and economic exchange to our local businesses and to our residents of all ages, and I'll touch on some of the programs that we've been doing on an ongoing basis. For this year, we will continue to develop a mission statement and program plans consisting of projects, exhibits, contacts, and exchanges of all types to foster and promote the objectives of this mission statement, and to implement the city council's approval of the program plan. We'll continue to keep the community informed of the Sister City program, and to urge and invite them to participate in our programs to, and to perform such duties as may be assigned by the committee, by the city council. Currently, we have one sister city in Galway Island, which is the fourth biggest city in Ireland. We have three friendship cities in Japan, in China, and in India. In 2018, we are very honored to have hosted the mayor of Galway, and we have planted a tree along with the mayor to signify our ongoing friendship. And last summer, we have a student exchange program to Bezen, Japan, which we have invited students of all backgrounds in Menlo Park to participate in this very valuable cultural experience to their country. Next year, we'll be hosting the students from Japan in our city, and I will invite people who have the means to be a host family in the coming year. Again, I would like to thank the staff and the city council for your ongoing support of this program, and with that, I would like to invite you to join our meeting tomorrow, November 14th, in the city, in the, in the city hall for our regular meeting, as well as to update our committee work plan and to discuss the calendar of events and planning through 2019. Again, I, like I said earlier, we'll be hosting the Japanese delegation in July 2019 with a date to be set, and we are recruiting hosting families for this project. With that, I thank you, I want to thank the staff members, especially Clay, for your continued support and hard work, and the city council member for your support, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, thank you very much, George. I know one of the things, just, since I'm participating on the committee, this committee is relatively new, and part of it is because the Sister City and Friendship City relationships are new. And much of the last, I would say, year and a half as the committee is getting started has been to try and organize the existing cities rather than create any more new friendship cities at this time. As you are all aware, it takes a fair amount of planning to, whether it's to organize a visit from the Galway mayor to Menlo Park, or, or whether it's to organize a group to go to Bezen, Japan, and to have correspondingly the teenagers from Bezen, Japan back. And what we've tried to do on the committee is to create, to, to make sure we're capturing the, the lessons of the last visit.
Exactly.
To make it easier for the next. So, I know that's a, a big part of what the committee's been doing, and I wanted, George, please, although I will be there tomorrow, but please extend to the rest of the committee my thanks for the work that they've been doing, and also want to echo the thanks to Clay for, for his help on, on the, on the committee, so thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, next, we have our consent calendar. I wanted to mention, just at the start here, that on item F4, that item, which is to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Cartograph Systems, has been postponed to the December 4th meeting, if these notes, okay. Yes, Starla, would you like?
That's correct. Staff is pulling that item for tonight.
Pardon?
Staff is pulling that item for tonight, but we'll bring it back in December.
Okay, great. So, I wanted to mention one thing, just a, a prod here. I took the liberty with also the vice mayor's input to invite certain of the council, the, certain of the council candidates to attend tonight's meeting, recognizing that may, there may be a change in, in the council, and wanted to certainly provide them the opportunity on items for that, that they can submit and provide input during the comment on this. We wanted to make sure that we are continuing during both this and the December 4th meeting to continue to do the city's business, but we want to make sure that we have the input and make the, make a smooth transition, so, so we welcome the, any questions or input, as well as public input on these items. So with that, on the consent calendar, I know there's one item to be pulled, that's F8. Are there any other items to be pulled? Okay, do we have a motion to accept F1, F2, F3, skipping F4, and then F5, F6, and F7? Okay?
Summated.
Just switching my screen over. The app is frozen. So, why don't we go to a show by hands on the, on the motion? All in favor, raise your hand. Okay. Okay, so the motion passes. 4-0. So Vice Mayor Mueller, did you want to make a?
Just the, the request came in that we put, actually put over F8, so that there was an opportunity for the new council members to go ahead and review it.
Okay. I am comfortable not taking up F8 at this time. I don't know if there's any objections, rather than doing any sort of tabling motion, but I think if there's no objections, F8 will be tabled. All right. So I believe that is all the items on the consent calendar. Thank you. We'll now move to the public hearing, G1, which is related to the, considered the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve a conditional development permit amendment to make modifications that would allow for a transit facility and associated site improvements on the project site located at 180 to 200 Jefferson Drive, as well as 220 Jefferson Drive. And, gotta make these shorter, that's, introduced. I gave you enough time to, to come up to the table. All right. So we have, uh, so we've got Acting Principal Planner Kyle Perata, as well as Deanna Chow there, and welcome to both of you.
Thank you. Good evening. Sorry, a slight delay here, waiting to copy my presentation over, so apologies. Just waiting for it to catch up here, so I can get that started. Okay, and we're up. All right, thank you. Good evening. So, staff will give a presentation first here, about 180 to 200 and 220 Jefferson Drive, and so I'll explain a little bit more about the, the two parcels as part of this project site as I get started with the presentation. But I want to kind of briefly start with a meeting outline here. So staff will provide an overview and updates. There are essentially two projects here, two parcels as part of the overall project site, and so you'll see that in the staff report, Attachment A and Attachment B, two separate recommendations for the council's consideration tonight. Following staff's presentation, the applicant does have a brief presentation as well, and so staff would recommend that the council hold questions till both presentations are completed, but certainly, if there are questions for staff, we can take those at, at the end of my presentation. Ultimately, the two parcels have two actions, so there should be a public comment period that incorporates both project parcels, and then ultimately, the resolutions in Attachment A and B are for each site respectively. And so, little bit of context here, the site that we're looking at is 180 to 200 Jefferson Drive and 220 Jefferson Drive. It's in the northern part of town, north of US 101, and so the map pin here shows generally the, the site with the two parcels and its location within that portion of the city here. And so, a little more detailed here, the location of this site, the two parcels shown in red, 180 to 200 and 220, in relationship to the Facebook West Campus and the Commonwealth Corporate Center. And so, the existing conditions on site now at 180 to 200, it's three office buildings, multi-story, regulated by a conditional development permit. And then the 220 site is a single-story office, single-story, one office building, and it's regulated by existing use permits and existing architectural control. And both sites are in the same zoning district, there's own office bonus available, so O-B is part of the Connect Menlo general plan and zoning nurse update. And so just for context here, how this site ultimately fits in with the Facebook campuses and buildings within the Bayfront area, it's just west of the West Campus and just kind of northeast of the Commonwealth Corporate Center project site. And then further to the west is the Menlo Gateway site. And so, this does become important as we talk about the actual project components themselves and the relationship of the transit facility at the site that the applicant's proposing to consolidate in relation to the overall inter-campus tram and shuttle operations here. And so I won't go into all the text here in detail, but essentially, the overall project components include a conditional development permit amendment at the 180 to 200 Jefferson Drive site to enable the construction of the consolidated transit facility for the shuttle and tram, so that includes modifications to the onsite circulation, including some removal of parking spaces, some new curb cuts between the two properties within the project site, and then also additional pedestrian bicycle circulation throughout the site, along with modifications to landscaping. Unique to the 180 to 200 Jefferson Drive site is the increase in building coverage for the actual transit centers themselves. Those would be located completely on this property and not on the 220 site. And then also, tangential to the overall project is the new guard shacks as part of this application, which would increase some gross flurry at the site, but would be within the maximum permitted by the existing conditional development permit at the 180 to 200 Jefferson site. And then finally, all these site improvements would require the removal of nine heritage trees on the 180 to 200 Jefferson site. On the adjacent site, the 220 site, the modifications are more limited to onsite circulation for vehicles and pedestrians, specifically the shuttle and tram circulation throughout the site, and I'll show a slide in, in a minute that kind of relays that in a little more detail, along with associated removal of trees, five heritage trees on that site to allow for that additional circulation through the two campuses, or the two parcels within the campus here. And so, kind of what I described previously, this is the existing and proposed shuttle and tram circulation at the 180 to 200 and 220 Jefferson Drive parcels at the project site. The dark solid lines and the dark circular icons are the existing transit network in the area for Facebook, and the new dash, the dash lines and the lighter circles are essentially the proposed new consolidated transit facility. And so, what this does is consolidate the circulation of shuttles and trams between the 200 Jefferson Drive and 190 Jefferson Drive buildings, mainly on the 180 to 200 Jefferson Drive site, with some circulation for buses and trams through the 220 site back to Jefferson Drive. And so, the main change here is that there would no longer be left turns in the northbound condition along Chilco Street at the unprotected intersections where shuttles and trams are currently making that and creating some traffic impacts for local vehicle circulation on Chilco Street there. And so, while shuttles could still turn right into the site here, they would be restricted from making that left turn right now at the, the unprotected intersections there, so kind of alleviating that traffic impact. And so, how this site fits into the overall network, and so I wanted to show this slide for context here again, this does show the, the Facebook inter-campus shuttle and tram network between the classic campus, Bayfront, Willow Campus, and then also kind of the campuses within the kind of northwestern part of the Bayfront area of the city. The, the campus site that we're talking about tonight, typically called Chilco Campus by Facebook, but by the city, it's 180 to 200 and 220 Jefferson Drive, and then also circulation that relates to the Menlo Gateway buildings as well. And so the project site is highlighted here in a shaded blue for context. And so, the overall review process, how we got to where we are today, the first step in the public meeting process with the Environmental Quality Commission, they reviewed the 14 total heritage tree removals, that's the nine on the 180 to 200 site, and the five on the 220 Jefferson Drive site on its meeting at September 17th, where it recommended approval of the heritage tree removal applications. And then ultimately, the next, next step was the Planning Commission review, where on October 22nd, the Planning Commission recommended the city council approve the project without modifications, and so those recommended actions for the council are located in Attachment A and B. So Attachment A is 180 to 200 Jefferson Drive, that is the conditional development permit amendment, along with the resolution for the heritage tree removal permits. And then the 220 Jefferson Drive site, since it's regulated by a use permit architectural control, there's a resolution for the council regarding the approval of the use permit and architectural control revisions, and then the separate resolution for the five heritage tree removal permits. As a brief update, since the Planning Commission meeting, staff has made some minor edits to the draft documents, specifically the conditional development permit and the use permit and architectural control revision as the conditions of approval, to kind of clarify the conditions a little further since then, and then also drafted the resolutions for the city council action. And so that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the project, or we can turn over to the applicant for their presentation.
I'm gonna ask one question. If you could go back to the, the map that you had of the, no, go back one more, yeah, right there. So, I want to make sure, and I, I read this in the staff report, but I, I'm not sure it had as much emphasis as I've experienced in my reality of trying to drive on Chilco at this time of night. time of night, where essentially, the problem has been getting that the traffic, as it's coming down Chilco from Bayfront, gets, trying to get to the Bellhaven neighborhood, gets currently is getting, is competing with the Facebook buses coming out of the Jefferson parking lot. And most, and many of them are taking a left going north on Chilco. And so you almost have this one car stops, bus, next car stops, bus, you know, it's sort of this alternate, and it just backs up the entire traffic into Chilco. I've only experienced that a few times, but it's pretty painful. I want to make sure that what we're doing here by creating this circulation so it's now coming out onto Jefferson, those buses, am I understanding correctly that that is reducing, if not eliminating, the bus or shuttle traffic coming out of Jefferson, correct?
Yeah. So the, this proposed project here would remove all left turns out of the site in that kind of the two uncontrolled intersections. Now, so those are conditions, those are built into the CDP and the use permit architectural control actions, but there is a requirement that the applicant, Facebook, submit a signal warrant, and I'm going to mess up the proper term here, transportation can correct if I'm wrong, they need to submit an analysis that determines if a signal is necessary there or warranted. And if there is, at that time, that there's a signal at one of those intersections out of the site, they could make left turns with the shuttles, but not until it's controlled. So the project would remove all uncontrolled left turns from the site.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, great. So any other clarifying questions for Kyle before we go? All right. So do we have the applicant? Is it? Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Mandy Spain. I'm with Facebook. So we'll just get this loaded up here. So Kyle pretty much covered the nuts and bolts of it. So I'm just going to go through really quickly kind of what we are, have as our current condition, which, as you described, is currently having the shuttles come down Chilco, turn around through the 180 Jefferson parking lot, and exit back onto Chilco. And it is
Can I ask you to move the microphone a little closer?
A little closer.
Perfect. Thank you.
Is that better? Yeah. So what we're proposing then is to change up the circulation. So this next slide shows it a little more clearly than the other one. And the circulation will now be coming to and from Jefferson Drive. So it'll circle around within our property boundary and exit back onto Jefferson Drive and mitigate that left turn concern that you were discussing out there at Chilco. The other thing that this is allowing us to do is provide a better, more safe environment for our employees to board the buses. It'll be better lit, it'll be, you know, a more controlled environment for boarding and debarking the buses. And this, we think, will help our ridership and encourage people to further use the shuttle So this is a diagram that shows a little bit better how the buses will be able to make the turns within the property. They do turn pretty wide, as you described, and so this document shows how this new circulation will allow that turning radius to be achieved within the property. And then it also shows the pedestrian circulation between all of the adjacent properties, which will get, help our people move through the campus a little more safely. So fundamentally, we're just looking at this as an opportunity to both solve some of the traffic problems as well as internal circulation. And that's it. Any questions?
Yeah, just, thank you. This is a much easier slide to understand than that one. I looked at it several times. It makes sense, that other one. I, I'm kind of curious about what, what this site does for future planning, you know, as you project forward on, you know, if there's a growth projection, let's just say a miracle happens in Dunbar and Rail or some kind of, you know, mechanism comes in. Have you future-proofed this so that this really looks like the site that's going to allow you to be able to continue, or will it be a, well, we got to scrap it, start over, and move it somewhere else because it's a big investment for you?
It is a big investment. Yeah. I don't think that that would be our intent. It is sized to handle all the traffic from not only the current buildings that we're leasing in this area as well as the gateway properties.
Yeah.
So I think this will help us kind of grow in this area, you know.
You can't make all the projections. But yeah, that's, that's all I was getting the sense of, is if this was going to be
So this is projected to, for our current, projected growth.
For the near long. Yeah. Thank you.
Let's see. Councilmember Keith.
Hi. Thank you for that information. And just a couple of things. I know you're reducing quite a bit of parking.
Yes.
How many stalls?
I believe it's in the area of 150 stalls get removed, but we are adding back the stalls that are currently being impacted by the, where we temporarily have the shuttle laid out. So we're actually adding back stalls, so the net loss, I think, is around 100 stalls.
So you're adding back about 55?
Yeah, something like that.
Okay. So in losing 100, can you just tell us how that's going to impact your operations?
Well, I think that already we're seeing, you know, significant ridership, and our parking is a little less impacted in this area than it is in other parts of our campus. I think that we anticipate that the offset will be negligible in terms of how we're parking the cars. So we don't anticipate having any issues with those, the loss of those spaces.
And then you talked about the percentage of people using the shuttle program. What are your estimates that that will increase by, by making this, these changes?
I don't know. It's either
Yeah, to keep it at 50%. Can you, can you just say in the microphone?
Oh, sorry. We expect to keep it at 50%.
The, keep what at 50%?
The ridership levels at 50%.
Oh, so you don't think this will increase the ridership?
Well, we'll have more employees, so it'll continue to, to grow.
Okay. So it'll be 50%, but when you add the new employees, you think it will help
Yeah.
increase the number of people that are using it?
Exactly. Yeah.
And then the trees, there are about 14 heritage trees.
Yeah.
And I know, you know, obviously, the staff report talks about replacing it at a two-to-one ratio, but can you just tell me what your plans are for that?
Yeah. So we have approximately 28 to 30 new trees that we'll be planting on the site as a replacement, and the species have already been reviewed with the Environmental Quality Commission. And those will kind of create a better canopy for the space that's there now. Several of the trees that we've outlined for removal are in fact in poor health. So of all of the trees that are arborist reviewed, only two of them are considered in good health, and those two happen to be really critical to the circulation. So.
Do you know what size gallon container you're replacing them with?
Oh, gosh, off the top of my head, I think it's, I don't remember. Yeah, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I can get that for you. I know it's at least the minimum required, but I think we've gone a size up.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, just because when you do the minimum required, we haven't looked at this in years, you know, whether or not we should amend that. But it takes so long for these trees to grow. So I would ask that you look at, you know, going up a few sizes so that it actually is more mature when it's put in. And I understand there's the balancing act between the health of the tree, you know, what size you put in, but if you can put something in that is not just the basic minimum, I think that's so helpful.
Yeah. No, I think that, yeah, we'll, we can take a look at that, absolutely.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And I should mention that we've, we are officially opening the public hearing, and so we do have a, one speaker, Pamela Jones. Welcome. Do we have any other speakers after Pamela? Okay, great. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Otaki, Mayor Protim Mueller, council members and staff, and Facebook. I will be thrilled if this does exactly what it appears to, which is to get 50% of the buses off of Chilco. That's the understanding that I have with it. I'm a little concerned that there's going to be another problem created because I'm certain Facebook had no idea what was going to happen when they put their, the bus hub originally on Chilco. The other piece that I think needs to be done is, is really have to do something about the pedestrian and bicycle crossing from one campus to Instagram, because that's another piece that substantially slows down traffic. I think that as we move forward with ensuring that there's no cut-through traffic, at least it'll only be buses and neighborhood traffic trying to get in there. But I'm really, I'm really thrilled that Facebook has come with a new plan, and I wish it well. And of course, that is somewhat self-serving. And I hope that they're able to make the changes relatively quickly. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Pamela. And did I see a card submitted by Cecilia Taylor? Come on up.
Good evening. I had a few concerns and wanted to find out if this informational item could be brought back to the new council. Had a couple of questions. That's okay. My dear dream is to have this open to the public, by the way, because I believe we need to have a better shuttle system in our city. The other question I have is as far as Chilco. So it looks like with the maps that you'll still be using a part of Chilco, and so I wanted to know if every, if all the bus traffic is actually coming off of that area of Chilco past, I believe it's Constitution? If it's all coming off?
It was going to be able to go right turn into the traffic, but the left turn, you know, slows the traffic a little bit.
Right.
And the left turn will not happen anymore, but buses will still come to the right turn.
Okay. And is there any way to eliminate that? Okay. My next question is, it'd be nice to have larger slides up here, but I really appreciate the printouts in the back. Has there been any of the council members, planning commissioners, or complete street commissioners actually taken a tour of the area to see how the change is actually going to occur? And the other question I have is why wasn't this brought to the complete streets? Thank you.
Thank you, Cecilia. Okay. Any other public comment? Okay. So let's come back up here. The, I know it went through EQC, it went through planning, but it didn't go through complete streets. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. And then, while I didn't hear the inter, the interaction on, on Ms. Taylor's question about the traffic on Cecilia, I mean, on Chilco, can you, Cecilia's question about Chilco, can you just come up to the microphone because I want to make sure that
Yeah, she had asked if it would get the buses off of Chilco entirely, and the, we're going to still be using Chilco to go in the southbound direction to take a right turn onto the property, but the left turn is what we're, we're talking about not using.
Right. And it's, so they'll be coming into
Into the property.
Into Jefferson.
Yeah.
The, and I'm assuming that the, what has been most disruptive to the traffic has been the exiting to the left, correct?
Yeah.
Because it forces the stop
Yeah.
and, and the, the flow of traffic.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Got it. And then, so essentially, the outbound traffic will be going out through Jefferson.
Correct.
And also, I'm trying to understand the, the mix of essentially internal within Facebook buses versus external, the larger buses, or is there really any, you know, difference in terms of, I mean, I know you have the trams, which are more within the, within Facebook buildings, and they're smaller, but then the larger buses that tends to be the commuters.
Correct. So on this plan, those two types of transportation will be treated the same. So they will both be rerouted to the Jefferson side of the property and then circle through and exit back onto Jefferson.
Okay.
But they both will still be taking, can still come southbound on Chilco and take a right-hand turn.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Vice Mayor Mueller.
So first off, just, so the question, the answers to Ms. Taylor's questions, we could have them brought back to the council as an information item as requested. That would be great. The question I have is do, it was similar to Mayor Otaki's, I mean, to Councilmember Klein's question, will this configuration work if, so Measure W right now is, hangs in the balance, but if it passes, one of the, one of the plans for Measure W is to put grade separations on Bayfront, will this work with that configuration for Bayfront?
Welcome, Fergus.
Good evening, Fergus O'Shea, Facebook. So Councilmember Klein, Mueller, sorry. What, exactly, so what was the question? I'm sorry.
So Bayfront Expressway, Measure W.
Yep.
My understanding is if it passes, part of the plans for Bayfront Expressways to put in grade separations.
Okay.
Would, does this transit hub work with that configuration, or will we need to rethink it should Measure W pass and grade separations come to Bayfront?
No. I mean, this is going to, we're not, the existing buildings are, are built out for us, so I don't see, this will do into the future. I don't see any reason why we have to adjust this in the future.
Okay. And then, this goes to Ms. Taylor's question, but I also want to bring up to it, to its staffs, you guys are aware of this, actually, Facebook with staff, for staffs, so up attention. There is talk of a regional TMA, Transportation Management Association, right now. There is talk of it in the Palo Alto City Council, all the way down, I believe, all the way down to Sunnyvale. So it's a discussion we may want to talk about, because I understand there's some discussion about the different technology companies actually sharing capacity within their buses. So I just want to express support tonight for that idea of the regional TMA, for exploring it, to see what that can yield in terms of congestion relief. I don't have any more questions, so, thank you.
There was one further point from Ms. Taylor's questions. So what this will also do will allow us to bring buses from Chrysler in, from Jefferson as well, and we're currently not able to do that. So in the morning and even in the evening, some buses will have that capacity. So even though the object is for us to take as many buses off going north as possible, they will also take some buses off from having to come south on Chilco to turn and right because back, if you go back to the configuration, currently, we can't pull into Jefferson, and buses will be able to pull in and exit back onto Jefferson as well. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, great. I don't see any other questions. I don't have any further questions. So is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
And do we have a acclamation to close the public hearing? Okay. So you could see four nods about closing the public hearing. Any additional discussion? Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this per the staff report, as it's been vetted through the Planning Commission to us. And that's for the site located at 180 to 200 Jefferson Drive and the 220 Jefferson Drive.
I will second the motion. I will also add, not as the motion, but as guidance or request, to come back later with the, at a future meeting with an information item regarding Ms. Taylor's questions.
And I actually would like to add one thing to the motion, just on the trees, to go, to utilize trees that are one size larger than what is mandated for the city currently.
Through the mayor, if I could just respond. Yeah. So I did look at the plans while, while we were discussing. The, the plan's proposed 30-inch box minimum, so that is larger than the 15-gallon minimum replacement tree.
Oh, good. Then I just want to incorporate that in the motion, and then it's set. Thanks. Thank you for looking in for that.
And as the secondor, I will agree with that.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Let's, oh, that's right, we're having issues here. So Judy, how would you like us to, would you show of hands, or would, is that fine? So Judy, how would you like us to, would you show of hands or would, is that fine?
Yeah, show of hands is fine. Thank you.
Show of hands in favor of the motion. And any against? Okay. So I see four zero.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor Mueller, did you have a?
I am recused from item H1 as my company is currently in negotiations to move to a property on Oak Grove Avenue.
Oh. Okay.
And I too am recused from item H1 because my office is within a couple hundred feet of Oak Grove.
With, yes.
So, and I'm just gonna, I won't be back for the information item.
All right. And I know we are, so first of all, we do have three council members present. We still do have a quorum and we're trying to get Councilmember Carlton on the line.
Correct.
So, thank you all of you showing up for this item. Bear with us just a moment as we get the technology squared away here. Okay. I just texted her as well. Why don't we get started with the presentation and then, she may have expected us to get to this later. So, all right. So this is item H1, which is on regular business, which is adopt resolution number 6470 to approve the permanent installation of bicycle improvements on Oak Grove Avenue, Crane Street, and University Drive. Appropriate funds and authorize the city manager to award construction contracts. And we have junior engineer Marlon Almentado will make the presentation. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, council. Pleasure to be here today. My name is Marlon Almentado. I'm a junior engineer with the Transportation Division with the city. I'm accompanied by Hugh Louch, principal at Alto Planning and Design. Will be presenting the Oak Grove Avenue, Crane Street, University Drive Bike Improvement Project. So for today's presentation, we're going to go over some of the background information for the project. Hugh will go into the pilot evaluation and then going into the complete streets commission review, other project considerations, and ending off with the project cost and recommendations to city council. So background information, the project was first initiated by the Bicycle Commission in 2015. Today Bicycle Commission has merged with the Transportation Commission to form the Complete Streets Commission. The project has been, also been added to the 2016 City Council Work Plan as well as the 2017 Work Plan and the 2018 Work Plan. The project is consistent with several city policies, including the 2016 General Plan Circulation Element as well as the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan. These policies seek to improve safe multimodal transportation and encourage health and wellness through active transportation options. So general description of the project, as part of the project, we looked at installing Class II buffered bike lanes on Oak Grove Avenue from Rebecca Lane to Crane Street as well as on University Drive from Live Oak Avenue to Middle Avenue. Buffered bike lanes helps separate bicyclists from motor vehicles on the roadway. And then we looked at installing Class III bike routes or charros on Crane Street from Valparaiso down to Live Oak Avenue going on to University Drive as well. So as part of the project timeline, on December 6, 2016, city council approved a content plan for a one-year trial installation of bicycle improvements on Oak Grove Avenue, Crane Street, and University Drive. And then on March 28, 2017, city council reviewed trial metrics for the project. As part of the review, they approved time-sensitive trial metrics which included volume counts for pedestrians, bicyclists, and vehicles as well as parking occupancy and vehicle speeds. At a later date, city council did approve the remaining trial metrics for the project which included an online survey, an intercept survey, and collision analysis. In May 2017, we did proceed with a pre-pilot data collection. This occurred after April recess for schools and before summer break. In August 2017, we did begin construction of buffered bike lanes, charros, and appropriate signage. The buffered bike lanes and the charros were installed in paint as part of the temporary pilot. And then at Oak Grove Avenue at Laurel Street, we did have some traffic signal improvements at this intersection. In September of 2017, construction was completed in its entirety. Since the, since its completion, there have been some minor design changes which included removing the delineate posts in the buffer areas due to safety concerns. This was more to accommodate access for recology trucks, for, access for recology trucks to the curb on service days and also allows cyclists to use the buffer area when obstructions were present in the bike lane. City staff also installed keep-clear pavement markings at the Nativity School driveways for better vehicle circulation. In November of 2017, we did collect mid-pilot data collection. And then in May 2018, we did collect end-pilot data collection which included non-time-sensitive trial metrics such as the online survey, the business survey, and intercept survey as well as the collision analysis. And with that, I'll pass it on over to Hugh who will be going over the bike pilot evaluation.
Thank you, Marlon. Good to see you all here today and talk about the evaluation part of this project. Marlon already covered the metrics that we're looking at, but maybe just to quickly summarize, we're looking at volumes of all modes, we're looking at vehicle speeds because we know that's important, we're looking at how parking is used and available within the city, we're looking at public input in a lot of detail, and we're looking, most importantly, of course, at safety because that's ultimately why we design these types of projects. And I will say there's a lot of detail in the report that's available. We're going to hit some high points here and if you have any questions, of course, we can get into some of the more detail after. So let's start with the volumes. I think the basic finding for automobile volumes, and perhaps unsurprisingly, is that we don't really see any significant changes. We see some small changes here and there, but nothing about it exhibits a pattern that looks like it's a function of the bikeway that was installed. It's really not directly related to this project. And as Marlon noted, there were some other changes that happened at the same time. When we shift into the bicycle volumes, we see some interesting patterns that are, that probably kind of caught your eye if you looked at this. So we do see along Oak Grove in particular, but also along University, general increases in volumes, with the exception of at Laurel, we'll talk about that. And that's primarily on the weekday. And then on the weekend, we actually see some declines across the board except on University that we think are a function of other things that might be happening in terms of travel patterns, not directly to the project, but we can also talk about those a bit further. Just to break that down in a lot of detail, there's a lot of bars on this chart, so I just want to highlight some of them for you. So let's start with the AM peak. So you can see at Crane, on Oak Grove Avenue, at Crane, at Laurel, and El Camino Real. So these are the three places we collected data on Oak Grove. You see these kind of steady and significant increases in the AM peak and then somewhat less of an increase in the PM peak on those locations as well as on University. So these are the travel that are on the main route. So if you look just at Oak Grove and University, basically, we're seeing pretty good increases in bike volume. So people are using this facility. And if we were to look at the corresponding chart for the travel that happened on the crossing routes, you would generally see declines. And so one of the things that tells us is that we are seeing a kind of shift in travel patterns from other routes to this new facility for people who are biking, which is exactly what is intended to do. And then I would just note that there's this also somewhat substantial increase on the weekend on University and declines elsewhere. But I think if you look at this, particularly on the main routes, there's not a lot of decline on the main routes, really just on those secondary routes is where we're seeing most of the declines on the weekend. But these aren't increasing as much. So if we turn our attention to speeds, we look at travel speeds of automobiles because obviously that impacts the, all users of the road. And we don't see any significant changes. They're generally changes of plus or minus, you know, one or two miles per hour of what we use are the 85th percentile speeds, which I'm sure you're familiar with, but that are often typically used for the purpose of setting speed limits and help us understand sort of, you know, where most of the travel is happening, or most of the speed is happening that or below. And so most of these routes, you know, a few of them did have higher speeds to begin with, and they remain about that level. And the buffer, as Marlon was saying, does provide kind of greater separation, especially in those cases as a potential value. Let's turn our attention to the parking. We know that parking is an important consideration within the city and being able to access businesses and other locations. So what we did was we went out and collected data for on-street parking and for your parking plazas at four or five different times during several days, both in all those different phases of the process that Marlon mentioned. And then we aggregated those and looked at kind of averages across both times but also regions. And the little map inset on this chart shows you the regions that we looked at, so east of El Camino, some west of El Camino, looking more around University Drive and then in the downtown area. And generally, the high-level finding here is that on average, there was always plenty of available spaces. So the bars in this chart show you how many spaces were available in each of those separate areas. And as you can see, there are quite a few available. But we recognize that that's not the only condition that you care about. We also looked at what peak utilization was of parking and when those occurred. And typically, that would occur sort of midday in the lunch hour is when we saw most of the peak utilization of most of the parking, especially downtown. And what we found there was that there were some cases where there was heavily utilized parking. However, it was rarely more than a block or two away that parking was available for folks. So even in those cases where that, where we reached that peak. And most of the places where we had peak utilization, especially in the plazas, those were already basically full during the times that we were measuring high levels of utilization. Turn to a public outreach effort. So we had a variety of public outreach that was done as part of this process. We had an online survey that was pushed out through city media efforts and others. We also took that same survey and actually had someone out during the lunch hour and collected some intercept surveys and also made people aware of the online survey if they preferred to go that way. And then we had a business survey as well that was distributed by city staff and sent back. And about nine businesses returned that survey to the city, so not a huge number. There were concerns in that survey, in particular about parking was the main issue that was raised as part of it. Also concerns about if you were going to keep it, making it permanent, using permanent materials was another concern that we heard. We have a lot of detailed questions in the public survey, but I think the bottom-line one that kind of captures it well is this one, which shows that generally there was strong support for the project, whether we looked at all just residents based on the survey respondents or everyone, so we did reach people who came from out of the city as well. Just generally sort of strong support for the project. We also have findings that show increased bike ridership, especially for kids, which is, you know, one of the target groups that we have for this, so that was good to see. And then as I say, you know, perhaps most importantly of all, we care about safety when we're designing transportation facilities. And so we have a table and a map and some other information that get into some of the detail on collisions. And again, we looked at the data for sort of a year prior to get that period. And then after the construction was complete, we counted collisions from that period for another year afterwards. We have sort of equal comparison. And as you can see, just the high level again, is we see a general decline in collisions. We do see some locations where there's particularly significant decline. It turns out that most of those are in El Camino Real and our project didn't really directly affect El Camino Real, so we don't really want to claim credit for those, but it's a good sign and we're happy to see that, of course. And then just overall, if you look on the corridor itself, so if you look on the major streets, whether it's Oak Grove or University or these others, we see these declines in collisions there as well. So that's great to see. And perhaps, you know, most hearteningly of all, of course, both before and after, there were no fatalities or serious injuries, so we're really happy to see that as well. Now, the one area of concern is that there were two more bicycle collisions during this period than there were afterwards. And so that could partly be a function of more bicycle riders, but it also could be a function of the design and the location of the bikeway that we wanted to address. So two of those collisions do in fact occur at either end of the Oak Grove segment, at Laurel and at Crane. And so that was certainly something where looking forward, we might want to look at how do you think about those crossings and how turning movements occur with the bikeway? So certainly something to look into. And then there's another collision that occurred at Crane and Valparaiso. And we know that there's some issues there, crossing again, that again, I think are important to look at going forward. So overall, we see this net improvement, but clearly, looking at the fine details is important. So in summary, you know, we think this bikeway is successful and deserves permanent installation. You definitely are seeing increased use of it. You're seeing changing travel patterns for people biking as well, which is great because they're moving off of roads like El Camino Real and moving on to roads like Oak Grove and Laurel and University, which is really good. We obviously think we should continue monitoring some of these other issues. So one of the issues, I didn't mention before, but at Maloney, I know there's been concerns that were raised during the project about left-turn movements. We actually sent someone out to observe that and didn't notice any issues when we were out observing, but that doesn't mean they're not there. And so it's certainly something to keep looking at to make sure traffic operations kind of work with El Camino Real there. Certainly, also, there was an issue raised about yielding to pedestrians on University. And during the project, the city went out because there's one intersection where there was potential issues where there's no stop sign and then people were trying to get across. And so they put out one of those paddle signs that says to yield to pedestrians, and we also observed there. And from what we saw, it seemed to be working effectively. So that was good to see as well. And then finally, as I just mentioned, you know, monitoring those collisions on Oak Grove and at Crane and Valparaiso is something we think should be done on an ongoing way. So with that, I'll turn it back to Marlon.
Thanks Hugh. So prior to this meeting, we did bring this item to the Complete Streets Commission last month at their meeting on October 10, 2018. Six members of the public commented, most of the comments were generally positive with a request for modifications to the project to include allowing parking during off-peak hours on Oak Grove, a loading zone on Pine Street, as well as addressing some safety concerns turning into the Valen Brosas Center from Oak Grove. So we determined as staff that parking east of Laurel Street was already considered during the design phase of the pilot, but it could not be accommodated due to the roadway widths. And as far as the Valen Brosas Center driveway, we are currently reviewing the driveway operations at this location. After the, oop, I'm sorry, the Complete Streets Commission at this meeting unanimously approved a recommendation to city council to approve the permanent installation of bicycle facilities on the, along the corridor with a strong recommendation to extend the bike lanes on Oak Grove to reach University Drive and on University Drive between Oak Grove Avenue and Santa Cruz Avenue as well. This recommendation is currently under consideration in the Transportation Master Plan. After the commission meeting, we After the commission meeting, we did receive a letter from the Oak Grove Place Homeowners' Association Board. The board represents homeowners and residents at 1150 and 1160 Pine Street. And it stated that, since the implementation of the project, homeowners have lost the ability to load and unload passengers close to their homes near the corner of Oak Grove Avenue at Pine. Staff, we determined that a loading zone could be installed on the east side of Pine Street near Oak Grove Avenue, if so desired by City Council. Also, if so desired by City Council, staff can reach out to Pine Street residents, again, regarding parking removal and other options on the west side of Pine Street, between Oak Grove Avenue and Cherry Avenue. These parking restrictions would be brought to a future Complete Streets Commission and another City Council meeting in the future. So, some other project considerations. So, the city did receive a grant to install sidewalk and green infrastructure along the Val Ambrosa Center frontage on Oak Grove Avenue. It's part of the CCAG grant for Safe Frost School, Safe Frost School Sidewalk and Infrastructure Pilot Grant. But the sidewalk project at this area would provide direct access between the Nativity School and the Nativity Church, and it will also allow shared use of the parking lots. So, because, since the sidewalk would provide better pedestrian access and the other reasons, staff plans to proceed with this sidewalk project without providing on-street parking. Another project that had a direct correlation with Oak Grove, the Oak Grove Project, is the Peninsula Bikeway. So, the Managers' Mobility Partnership, which is a joint venture between managers of four Silicon Valley cities, Palo Alto Mountain View, Redwood City, and Menlo Park, was, was brought together to address transportation issues. And they've worked collaboratively to create the Peninsula Bikeway. The bikeway is a route that uses existing bikeways and local streets to better connect the cities. And they recognize that the Oak Grove Project and the bicycle improvements along this project, in their determination of the route. The interim Peninsula Bikeway launched recently on September 8th of, of this year at Bridges Park, where Menlo Park did serve as the host city for the event. So, moving on to project cost. So, the project's current balance has sufficient funds to cover staff time for review and field observations, but it does not include funding for permanent installation of the bike improvements. The construction costs would include the replacement of roadway striping, which is currently in paint, to thermoplastic striping. It includes traffic control and contingency as well. Currently, the project has a $40,000 remaining balance in the project budget that can be used towards construction costs. So, staff is requesting that in appropriation of $110,000 to cover the rest of the construction costs to complete this project. And with that, and with Hugh's recommendation from the pilot evaluations, staff is recommending City Council to approve the permanent installation of bicycle improvements on Oak Grove Avenue, Crane Street, and University Drive, as well as appropriate the, the funds for construction costs. And we are asking to authorize the city manager to award construction contracts. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you both. Do you have clarifying questions before we go to public comment? Okay, Councilmember Klein?
Thank you for, I mean, that tremendous amount of work. The data is fantastic to back it up, and hopefully, we can find a way to continue to collect as we go along. I, I drive that route at the exact smack peak time. Hillview starts at 8:20. Depending on the amount of gear that my kids have to use after school at MA, probably two or three days I have to drive, if it's like a sports and then a music, they just can't ride their bike with all the gear. So, which is terrible, because I really don't like going through middle Nativity, middle school, Hillview, and, you know, the bonus is the new teenage drivers. But I've actually now have a really intimate understanding of this route. So, coming back up, as the, as the kids ride up, there's four areas that I, if we, if we make this permanent, I'm, I'm curious if we have flexibility or ability to keep evaluating these four areas. I don't want to hold up progress by doing that. But the one is obviously the, the egress area at Nativity School, right, where the Keep Clear is. It's, when you get a pack of the bike, bikes coming up and people trying to get out, go left and right out of that area, that's the first signal. The second is, you know, there's, there's the intersections, obviously, at Laurel, but I, I go back, I go up further and it's going to be, the real impact when I watch them is going to be right when you cross El Camino and you curve on Oak Grove. So, you come, there's that, that real sharp break. They've got, you've got 15, 18 bikes sometimes in a pack, and they're all over the place. And especially, you know, when they're amped up to pass each other whenever they want. And that turn is so narrow, it just is. And so, if there's left turns going into the plaza, that, that first left turn, and it happens, that, that does create immediate issues. You know, the car stops, some people aren't really ready for the stop. Just evaluation. I'm not saying there's anything we have to do right now. The, the next one is Crane. You mentioned it here. You know, these, the unspoken rule is that stop signs don't exist when you're riding your bike unless there's a car that's really, it's, it's imminent danger. Otherwise, they're going, right? So, anybody who's coming across Oak Grove is going to wait for the pack. It, it's been learned. I mean, I can tell there's a behavior learning process for that timeframe, but there still are some people who are new on Crane going across Oak Grove who think they're going to stop, right? And and there's a, there may be a way to signal for those, maybe there's signage, or just, again, evaluate that one. The last is going to be the University. Kids come left on University, loop around, they all pretty much just go right in the middle of the road, basically down University on the left after Oak Grove. There's a, there's a given that they want to go into the parking lot behind the bank teen place. And so, that route is definitely where they should be going, because the right turn is just not feasible onto Santa Cruz. It's so narrow. And you got the right turn lane, then you've got the, the other lane. And there, there is no room. So, I've seen multiple times where there's traffic, and the kids have to literally stop and get off their bike and move it, because it's just, and so, but it's usually stragglers. There's like two or three kids who make the mistake of trying to go that way, and the others, no, going behind it. I don't know if there is a, an agreed-upon access route, that parking lot. We could say that, go this way until the owner tells us not to, because it is easily the safest by far. Those are the, the spikes. Everything else, it's, you know, there's, there's the acceptable madness of middle schoolers trying to get to school on time. But I think it's, it's encouragement. I, I do see more bikers. I, I see more of the middle school kids coming up that route. I think it's working. So, I appreciate all the work. Thanks.
Councilmember Keith?
Thank you. Thanks for the report. It's been exciting to see this project go in and so many people using it. And I did have a couple of questions for clarification. Some, Hugh, that you talked about early on in your presentation, and maybe you can go back to that slide, with the percentage of cyclists, it was table one. And you, you sort of talked about the weekend change. I was surprised when I looked at the data about the weekend change minus, you know, 27%. Yeah, that one. And then, on the first three, it goes down, and then on the last one, it goes up. And you sort of touched on that, that it's a change in patterns of people bicycling on the weekends?
Yeah. I mean, I guess what I would say is that we didn't survey people, so we don't know absolutely why the changes would be occurring. So, to a certain extent, it's kind of looking at what the pattern of data seems to show and changing that. So, so the couple of things, when you dig in a little deeper, most of the change is on the crossing streets, which is actually true on the other streets as well. When we see decreases, it's because the crossing streets are decreasing. So, Laurel, we're seeing fewer people biking. El Camino Real, we're seeing fewer people biking. And in those places where we took the counts, we're seeing fewer people biking. So, there's that.
On the weekends?
On, on the weekends and on the weekdays, actually. That's true of both. So, we generally see declines on those kind of crossing streets and increases on the main streets. On the weekends, what we see is sort of steady on the, on the main streets. So, on Oak Grove, the volumes don't change a whole lot, but we see declines on the, on the crossing streets, more or less. So, there might be some pattern changes. And then, you do see this big increase to University. It is possible people are just kind of going different ways to the same places, or making different trips. Weekend trips are also, you know, change in ways that are probably not directly related to other factors we might consider. You know, a, a new shop opens or closes or whatever, right? So, there are things like that. So, weekday trips that, you know, we might expect to see these kind of regular peak period travel, it, it could just be coincidence for the weekend that we see some of these changes. I'd be, I'd be a little, you know, want to be a little careful on how far we can stretch the data that we do have. But as I say, we do, we're not seeing reduced use of the, of the main bikeway facility that we studied, but we are seeing changes on those.
Okay. And then, can you next go to the slide that you had with the map showing the collisions and things? So, looking at this, the Crane Street, three previously, five this time. You touched upon that a little bit. Is that a concern, or what can we do to reduce that there?
Three previously?
I'm looking at Crane where it says it was three, and then it went up to five.
That's the one I was mentioning also. It's just, it's basically, there is no stop sign if you're on the bike and it looks okay. There's a lot of visibility, right?
Right.
You can see all the, all the turns and everything.
So, yeah. Again, I think the issue with there, there is that mostly we're seeing turning movements being an issue. And again, so potentially looking at striping that indicates bicyclists are going through the intersection there. I do think-
Striping that indicates, so with paint?
Potentially. It's something-
What?
That's an example of something you might consider, is sort of, to make it clear that if, if you're making a right turn, say, on a crane, you know that there's going to be some through movement. Signage could be another thing to consider.
Yeah. I think, just seeing that the other areas went down, I would say, you know, I'd want to see something there. I mean, I'm not getting into comments, but I want to get clarification on a couple of things.
Yeah, 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 for sure, for sure.
And then, you talked about Crane, Valpo, and that being, that's a problem area.
We saw, well, there was one collision there, and there were none before. So, it's certainly something, and again, because the bikeway now kind of comes along Crane. So, if you're going the other way and you're making a left across Valparaiso, I think certainly that is a more challenging turn to make, and there's a lot of vehicles using that. And I think at peak periods, it can be a little bit challenging to make that left turn. So, that's again, something where either some paint or, or signs or something could be valuable to look at.
A bike box, maybe, or?
So, that's a stop sign, so you typically can't use a bike box in a stop sign situation. You use those for signals, but there might be other things that you could look into, we could look into to think about that.
Like what, though?
Well, just even something simple that kind of marks the bike way across the intersection so that people know, or, or a sign that indicates for people coming up in either direction of Valparaiso, that there are bikes crossing, that could be valuable.
Okay. Yeah, that seems like it. And then, there was discussion, there was an email sent in asking about extending this, the bike lane up to University, on Oak Grove up to University. And I'd like to hear the thoughts on that. Yeah. I know, because they're, as we, you know, I do that too. I mean, I'm going to go to University and then turn left to get to Santa Cruz. So, that's what people intuitively want to do.
Yeah. We did hear a strong recommendation, like I said, from the Complete Streets Commission to extend it to University. And that's something that we would continue to look at. Obviously, we would have to, parking removal would have to be done on, on that stretch of Oak Grove to University, as well as on University to Santa Cruz. So, we're, we're taking that into consideration. I know that's in the transport, that's being discussed as part of the Transportation Master Plan is, process as well.
Right. It is one of the 170 ideas in that Transportation Master Plan. But, I mean, that's something that we could also recommend tonight. We could have that as a recommendation to do, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Oh, just, oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, starling.
I, I believe you could. You could include that in the motion.
I'll just jump on that, because if we're not prepared to have that conversation, we just all need to accept that that's where they're going.
Right.
The pack's going straight. They're not taking a left. They're going up to University and left.
They're not, they're not going to Crane, exactly. So, that's something I, I know as we're looking at this tonight, that is something that we could make a recommendation on, because we know it's being done. And for, for safety issues. And then, the thermoplastic for visibility. What I would like to see, I know the thermoplastic is just paint. So, you could put those white bollards up, right, that just gets, that are drilled into the street, correct?
In, in place of the thermoplastic?
Or with them. But I'm thinking about many places where I see that now. I think Jonathan Weiner sent in an example on Middlefield in Palo Alto.
Right. Well, the, the reason the delineated posts were initially removed from the pilot is just because of the access for bicyclists to use the buffer area when there's waste bins on the curb, and also for recology trucks, because of where the bike lanes sit against residential, or residential houses, or other businesses to put their trash bins out on the street. It's hard for trucks to maneuver in and out of the bike lane to access those waste bins. And then, because of those vertical measures, they have to go in, and then, I think it's spaced every like 15 feet, which is a really tight, really tight spot for them to get into, yeah.
Okay. Just something to think of. I understand what you're saying. I appreciate the idea about the recology trucks and things coming for once a week. Okay. And then, we also received emails from Laura, Jason, thank you. And Laura was asking about a white zone for drop-off and perhaps a parking period. Can you just respond to that? Because I'm sure she's going to have questions about it.
Was this the one that's on Pine Street?
This is, yeah, it's related to, it's Oak Grove Place.
It's on Oak Grove.
It's on Oak Grove.
Right.
So, we were looking at the loading to be placed on Pine Street out of the bike lanes. Were, just, it's a, yeah.
Yeah. I know, they'll have an opportunity to speak, but I'm just, I'm simply asking for clarification from the email that we received to City Council inbox.
Sorry, what was the question again, sir?
So, just about a white zone for drop-off and perhaps parking period when kids are in school on Oak Grove. In front of, it's, this is from Laura, Jason, a board member from, I'm looking at the email here, Oak Grove Homeowners Association at the corner of Oak Grove and Pine.
I think that's something we can continue looking at. I don't have a definitive answer for that right now.
Okay. But you're saying, perhaps, what you're saying is, I heard you say something about Pine Street. What were you contemplating for Pine Street?
Well, we're, staff was looking to implement a loading zone on, a passenger loading zone on Pine Street at that corner of Pine Street and Oak Grove.
So, it would not conflict with the bike lane?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
I see. Just a few more, I think. Oh, okay, Val Ambrosa Center, including that, that vital sidewalk that is missing right now. I think that's great. You got a CCAG grant for that. And then, it sounds like you're saying take away the parking on there, because it, it can be shared between the two places now, once we add that.
Correct, yeah.
And, and this is something we had talked about when we implemented the pilot project, actually. We said we'd take, remove that parking if we put a sidewalk in.
Correct.
Okay. That's just following up on that. And then, the other thing, just, could we, you know, when the kids are crossing, for example, El Camino Real, that seemed, Councilman McLean was just talking about, that, you know, sometimes those large packs are there, and they're not crossing maybe in the safest manner possible. But we could look at adding bike, bike lights. So, lights that would allow the bikes to go forward prior to the cars. It gives you a couple of seconds, right?
There are pretty, there are federal limitations on when you can use a bike signal separately. And right now, it's one of these things that's under interim authorization for how that's done. So, you can't just use it in any situation, but there are probably, there's certainly something you could explore and look at. It's not commonly used as like a leading, like a leading pedestrian interval. It's not commonly used in that way.
Why is that?
Well, that's a really good question, and I think that we could be here while talking about it. So, so I don't know that, I don't know if that answers exactly why that decision's been made, but that's effectively the way the kind of federal side of that has worked. That being said, you could consider, there are other things you could consider, like having a leading pedestrian interval and, you know, saying that, you know, bikes follow the pedestrian signal, for example.
Okay. I mean, I'm curious about it, because I was just down at National League of Cities in Los Angeles, and they were showing their new streets that they're implementing bike infrastructure on, and they're using bike, bike, bike lights.
Oh, sure. Signals.
Right.
Bike signals.
The signals.
No, and you can use bike signals. It says there's a little bit of restriction on how and where that they're used, based on sort of federal rules about that. So.
Okay. And I know Long Beach uses them all over the place.
And I will say, the other thing I will say is that there are plenty of rules like that, that some cities choose to not follow 100%.
Not follow. Right. And I think even our Caltrans has kind of more bike-friendly rules than, than- Right, and I think even our Caltrans has kind of more bike friendly rules than, than currently, than, than probably you'd find in the federal rules.
So generally speaking, they're very similar. So the rules like guard, govern where, you know, signalization, stuff like that.
I guess what I'm referring to is that Caltrans now has said it's okay to put bike lanes on El Camino Real, for example.
Oh, sure.
Right, so I'm just saying they have a little bit looser allowances for, to protect people when they're cycling. So I think if we could look at some intersections where that could be a possibility, that could be useful for safety issues as well. Okay, so I'll ask more questions afterwards. Thank you.
All right, great. So we have several speakers. I know that, so first of all, we have Steve Castillo come on up. While you're coming up, I just wanted to mention that, thank you for the letter that the association sent. I'm going to apologize that it sat in, it was in my inbox for like a week before I, I had it scanned in because I hadn't come by to get my mail. So don't blame staff for not reaching out. It's because they got the letter about a week ago and haven't had a chance to react directly to you.
Sure, sure.
But hopefully you've heard tonight their, their initial, you know, suggestion and recommendation and, and we'd love to hear your thoughts related to this.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Otaki and council members Keith and Klein. I think a little clarification from, Marlin had some thoughts that would go back to the Complete Streets Commission report about our concern at both 1150 and 1160. 1160 is, sits on Oak Grove and we have several, several elderly residents that have asked about being able to unload their cars, whether it be groceries or dropping off people. And we are suggesting that there could be like, like maybe a white zone or loading, unloading for like 15, 20 minute maximum. And it sounds like that was already being looked at. We are an interesting condominium association in that we are, our address is 1150, 1160, but 1160 abuts Oak Grove. And to reiterate, the 1150 Pine Street issue is that at the end of Pine Street where it abuts Oak Grove, it's a very narrow area and when people public park there, cars turning in or emergency vehicles turning in, it's very tight. As opposed to the other end of Pine Street, which is Ravenswood, where they've got, it's completely opened by Trinity Church. And so that area is accessible, but the street narrows as you come towards Oak Grove. And what we're asking is making that part of Pine Street a red zone or loading zone only to allow emergency vehicles and cars easier access in and out of Pine Street from Oak Grove. But I think the main concern for us and majority of homeowners that are here tonight is that we can get a, an area for people to park and unload that are elderly or dropping off passengers on Oak Grove.
Great, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Marie Moran, followed by Betty Bowler. And thank you all, by the way, for patiently waiting as we went through the earlier issues before we got to this. Thank you.
Well, thank you for listening to us too. I suppose I would be considered one of the elderly of 1160, 1160 Pine Street. I'm probably reiterating some of what Steve just said, but I want to make it absolutely clear to you that the only access to our front entrances is through this one gate on Oak Grove. We don't have an access from the street on Pine Street. So from Monday to Friday, there is no parking at all allowed and no stopping, which means I got a little repreh, repreh, reprimand from one of Menlo Park's police people that when a friend was dropping me off in front of my own home, that I was obstructing bike lanes. So I guess my, I would like an answer to a direct question. Say, I mean, right now I'm able to drive. Say in a couple of years I'm deemed not able to drive. So I either get somebody else to drive my car or maybe ask friends or call Uber or whatever and have to rely also on a delivery service. Where do I tell them to park? If they're going to pick me up, I'm not able to walk around the corner onto Pine Street wherever they might find a parking space. What I, what we are requesting is that a loading zone at least be allotted to us in front of our homes on Oak Grove so that not only I, but five other residents would have access to their homes. So that is my request and there are other considerations, of course, as Steve mentioned, about the problems on Pine, Pine Street with parking and inaccessibility really many times of the day for emergency vehicles. But my, I'll just rest, my, my point with please let me have a loading zone that someone can pick me up or deliver me by groceries. Thank you very much.
Okay, hold on just one second. Councilmember Keith, I think had a question for you.
Hi, thank you for speaking tonight. I did have a question. I'm just curious now, you, you pull in to park somewhere presumably, right? Where do you park currently?
We, we have underground garages.
Okay.
And you have to have an access to them. I mean, a delivery person cannot come into the garage.
Do they have, do you, is it a code that, that you have to press in to get the?
The residents have a door opener.
A door opener, okay. So if somebody came, you can't, you, and you know they're coming, you can open the gate for them?
I would have to go downstairs to accomplish that and that's not exactly easy if you need delivery service.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand the driveway situation. So people could pull into the driveway though and deliver things from, in the driveway?
I, I'm sorry, I-
When you drive in to park in your, wherever, in your complex?
Yeah.
Can people pull into that driveway?
I see Steve is shaking his head, no.
It's, it's an underground garage.
And how many feet before you start going underground from the street?
It's 90 feet slow down.
Okay.
And there's a vehicle stop, it's only open for residents.
I understand, okay. Thank you for that. Thanks, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, it's Betty Bowler, followed by Samir Patel.
I'm Betty Bowler. I've been a homeowner at 1145 Pine Street, which we're the other side of the street, since 1982. We're not part of the complex. They are our neighbors and friends across the street. Since this, I'm not opposed to bicycles, I'm all for them, but since this whole bike thing has come in, Pine Street has just turned into service alley. Because everyone dealing with this 12 condominium complex, their, their, their cleaning people, their gardening people, their, you know, my tile people, my new kitchen people cannot park on Oak Grove, so they're all parking on our end of the, end of Pine Street. We are, we are literally down to a one lane in and out. I have seen the fire department trying to get into the apartment complex beyond us that they could not and they had to go around and back. Now, you people are real young, but if, if anyone you know has had a stroke, every nanosecond counts. And if that 911 people can't get into you, you know, that's life and death. And, and I, and I've seen it happen and, and we've tried historically to try to get more parking available on Pine Street. But it, and it, but just again, for those of us that bought our homes in the 80s that felt like we were going to have this access point, we're all for, for bicycles, but give people a chance in the middle of the day to get in and out, to get their friends in and out, it would just, it, it really means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Samir Patel, followed by Mary Pat Kelly. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for listening to me. So I just wanted to at least tell you the gravitation, gravity of my situation. I relocated to Menlo Park. We just moved back from Japan because my parents are over 90 years old. And I've got a couple of siblings and we need to share responsibilities of managing my parents. Problem we have is at times we don't have daycare available for my parents. I need to get my parents over. I do live unfortunately on the second floor. I can't do anything about that. But the problem I have is if I were to park downstairs, which I did try, and give my mom upstairs, it's two flights of stairs, one's through the garage to the main level and then from there to the condo upstairs. So my mom just refuses to come. I've done it a few times. I've parked on Oak Grove, I don't have a choice. So I've parked in the bike lanes and I've kind of got her upstairs a few times that way. But I'm sure I'm just going to have a parking ticket or something or the other in due course because I'm doing something illegal. But I, I really, the, the two choices are either I park there and get her up or she's not going to come. And it's, it's a real situation. The, the other problem that I've had, you know, we recently moved here and it took me three weeks to get my refrigerator. Because Best Buy, the first time they came around, well, I didn't realize that I gave them the delivery address. We never really discussed about that they can't stop in the bike lanes. My bad. So they wouldn't, they, they tried stopping on Pine Street and they didn't want to come up. So we had about an hour long phone call at Best Buy. Then they sent a four man team on Pine Street and even they refused to come. And then finally, the third time I had to schedule it was on a weekend. So it's, it's actually, you know, I'm all for bikes, do ride bikes. I walked here. But, you know, the thing is that we at least must have a loading zone. The other thing is that if we need big deliveries or anything like that, it'd be nice if we could schedule it during off peak hours and call the city to just get a temporary permit or something of that nature. Now, the thing that I, I'm, you know, a bit miffed about, you know, the parking, the, the loading zone is if the bike lanes are not wide enough, then I'm just kind of wondering how the bicyclists are going to manage on the weekends because, you know, the bike lanes are only Monday through Friday. So are we saying that when somebody's parked on a weekend, they can't ride around? I completely accept that we're all for safety and everything else, but we do need to worry about the residents, especially when people are old. So I would really appreciate if you could do something about this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That was a little bit loud, the bell, but sorry. Thank you. Mary Pat Kelly, followed by John Conway.
Thank you so much for being here and hearing us. I just need to say that in 1160, this particular building, all of the, the exit out of the front door is funneled into a sidewalk, directly in the front of the building. So as a result, Maria's correct, she would have to walk a half a block around down to the end of Pine and then up Pine to be able to have anybody meet her there. In this particular building, first of all, we, we had at one point, when we started this whole project, we had three 83 year olds living in our association, only 12 apartments there. We've lost one of our 83 year olds. We have two left, two remaining. We now have a child who's handicapped who lives on the second floor. We have Samir with his parents who are older. And we have a mother with a brand new baby. And getting in and out of the car seat, getting the child in and out with groceries, all we are asking for is a single spot, just a single spot at the end of this sidewalk on Oak Grove. You can make it white, you can make it 20 minutes only. I swear to God, it probably would not be used more than once or twice a day at maximum. All the other times, all the bicyclists could, are free to go back and forth just at that, just for those moments that are necessary. We don't know when we're going to need to get someone to a dentist, a doctor, an emergency room appointment, a nurse practitioner. We are all pretty abled in this room, but we're only temporarily abled. We will all be disabled at one time. And to be honest, all of us are disabled in some ways. Some disabilities are more obvious than others visually. So I, I think that this is just one thing, as we've, we've bent to accommodate our bikers and we appreciate that. And we agree with the city planning that all modes of transportation should function within Menlo Park. And I think one of those modes is being able to ambulate from your home to a parking space in front, a temporary parking space. That's ambulation. That's another kind of transportation that we want to make available. So I'm just pleading with you, just please hear us on this. One space, 15, 20 minutes only to be used at any time because we don't know when it's going to be necessary. Just one space on Oak Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. John Conway, followed by Diane Bailey.
Hi, John, good evening.
Good evening, John Conway, 1200 El Camino Real. Mayor Otaki, council members and city staff. I want to talk about the issues of safety on the bike lanes. I have a real concern about the bike lanes on Oak Grove. Concerns for safety of students and others traveling in the bike lanes on Oak Grove. It is very dangerous out there about 8:00 AM. As you know, there's, in front of Nativity Church, there's parking. And at 8 o'clock, the services at Menlo, at Nativity are ending and there are bicyclists heading west on Oak Grove. So it is a challenge for park, people who are leaving Nativity Church and to watch out for the bikers. I'm one of the people who does participate every day at Nativity Church and I've really seen this and it's really a dangerous situation for people backing out and then the bicyclists heading up on, west on Oak Grove. Then the students at Menlo Atherton High School who are allowed to park on Nativity's parking lot in front of the church and along the wall into Valam Rosa. Also, I am concerned about rich, Councilman Klein brought it up, about Nativity School to pick up and drop off. That's another, to me, it's a serious situation. It is also very dangerous out there. Station 1300, when completed, will generate even more traffic on Oak Grove with the amount of cars that will park on that site. While it seems to be a foregone conclusion that the bike lanes will remain on Oak Grove, it should be rethought carefully. As I pointed out, Glenwood is far less traveled street with only single family residents east of the railroad tracks. Oak Grove in the same area has both condominiums and apartments requiring far more on-street parking and at its peak school times, far more traffic. The bike lane could proceed from Middlefield West on Glenwood to Garwood, turn south on Garwood, and then when El Camino 1300 is finished and connect through the former Dairy Lane to Oak Grove. The ongoing construction for El, Station 1300 creates great difficulties near the El Camino with merging bikes and cars. And I'm still concerned because the Station 1300 is not going to be completed until first quarter of 2020. So there's, a lot could happen out there. So for me and for hopefully you, safety should be a real priority for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Bailey, followed by Jen Woolison.
Good evening, Mayor Otaki and council members. My name's Diane Bailey. I run Menlo Spark, a local community group aimed at a climate neutral, zero carbon future for Menlo Park and Silicon Valley. And I'm here today in strong support of making the Oak Grove bike route permanent. I think it's been a very successful pilot. I understand that there are numerous concerns from residents and I hope sincerely that staff can work into the future to address those concerns. But I think the- But I think the safety of students trying to get to the many schools that this route serves is critical. And as Councilmember Klein suggested earlier, perhaps there can be a process moving forward to continually make improvements to the route without really delaying implementation. This bike route is really beneficial to students reaching school. It empowers them to get to school independently, and for every bicycle trip to a school, it removes two car trips from the roadways. So that means less traffic congestion and less pollution, and there are clear environmental and community benefits. I hope you'll move forward with this successful pilot and make it permanent. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Diane. Jen Woolison, followed by Eric Johnston.
So today, there's been a few Safe Routes to School events happening. Your citywide Safe Routes to School program kicked off today with a stakeholder meeting this morning and with a community meeting this afternoon. And in addition, Menlo Atherton High School today was conducting their Safe Routes to School travel audit, where they were counting how many kids were arriving, in what kind of vehicle, or on foot, or on bus. And all of these Safe Routes efforts don't mean a lot if we don't have the right infrastructure in place. And really, Oak Grove is the right direction to move to support all of these periphery activities of encouragement and education and evaluation that were occurring today. So I think Oak Grove is a needed step, and we need more Oak Groves. The data really speaks for itself. Ridership is up, collisions are down. People want it. The parking crisis downtown doesn't seem to have transpired. And, you know, people were writing in the city council about how they're using Oak Grove. It's clearly not perfect. There's a lot of trade-offs involved, but I hope we don't let perfect be the enemy of good, and we move forward with this pilot. And we extend the route also, as been mentioned, all the way to University and onto Santa Cruz. I do have great sympathy for the residents that have been affected by parking issues. Earlier this evening, I was talking to Betsy Nash's husband about Santa Cruz Avenue and how there's no parking now in front of his home. And I know that when we do bold initiatives, like putting in sidewalks or bike lanes, it does have an impact to residents, and we shouldn't take that lightly. But we do need to weigh those costs with the benefits that come to the larger community, to our environment with climate change. We need to do everything we can to promote people getting out of their cars. And I hope that you consider all this when you decide what to do moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Eric Johnston, followed by Fay Johnston.
I live on 1160 Pine Street, so this is a unit that's facing Oak Grove. So the bike lanes affect me a lot, and they also affect me a lot because I bike to work every day. And so I'm really excited about bike lanes. I think the more bike lanes we have in Menlo Park, the better. It really can transform an entire city. So thank you for doing that. With that said, my unit, we have a number of elderly. We have a disabled kid. We have a number of babies. And I think it's pretty clear that we really do need some sort of solution to help these people. Otherwise, they really have no other options. So please just take, take what they say seriously. Thanks.
Thank you. Fay, welcome.
Can I get an extra three minutes? Just kidding. Good evening, Mayor Otaki and council members. My name is Fay Johnston. And I actually want to start out by saying, my husband and I, we were students when we were dating, and that's, we would frequent biking down Oak Grove very often. So it is our home, that street, and we've been fortunate enough to now own a place on Oak Grove, so it's, we feel very lucky to raise our family there. So with that said, like I said, we're avid bikers, but we do believe that the placement of our, of our building in particular, and the bike lane poses accessibility concerns to our building in particular. Like you've heard, the main entrance faces Oak Grove. That's the only main entrance to all the units. The underground parking structure is, it's very steep, and there are stairs going up to the units, so it's quite difficult. So I'm just here to support, again, support the bike lanes. Thank you so much for your presentation, and stand with the residents to help find a good solution for these elderly and otherwise disabled. Thank you.
Thank you, Fay. Fran Dean.
Good evening, Fran Dean, Chamber of Commerce. Are we ready for a permanent installation, or is there more work to be done prior to authorization of funds? Have concerns raised prior to and during the pilot implementation been resolved? Is this the best student route, or are there other more direct or preferable alternatives? Have we increased safety? The April 18th meeting, 2017, council vote was three to zero to two, based on safety concerns. Unfortunately, those two council members are not here tonight to voice their concerns. Have the separate improvements voiced in the motion been addressed at that email, or excuse me, at that meeting, been sufficiently addressed? We have action minutes of that meeting, which do not capture the points made as part of the motion when legal representation was no longer present. They include the student drop-off improvements, electronic speed signs, sidewalks. By the way, sidewalks in Valum Rosa will take care of that impasse, and term visual impasse, it will be a good thing, a good move. We've lost institutional knowledge, the bridge to the action minutes, and the lack of carryover to staff reports. Staff representation at that meeting was the head of transportation, the assistant city manager, the city manager, Nikki Nagaya, Chip Taylor, and Alex McIntyre are no longer with the city. Only the videos remain. They are not captured in minutes. Has there been sufficient education at schools to encourage bike safety and the use of bike routes? And I leave this for your, well, take a look. And finally, parking concerns. We've asked that any changes to on-street parking be met with alternative parking solutions. Parking spaces are continually eroding with no solution or compromise. The bike route, as the staff report says, removed 167 on-street parking spaces. Recent changes to a loading zone, limited spaces in a plaza, despite staff recommendations. Downtown cafes removed on-street parking. Each of these actions was made for a good reason, but without a solution for the unintended consequences of parking, forcing more patron and employee parking into the residential areas. As one of the 2018 council priorities, parking has not been addressed, even as a study session, despite a petition from local businesses in January of this year. We continue to support this pilot. We support safety for pedestrians, for bicyclists, and motorists. However, we recommend that you continue with the current state. Recommend we continue with the current state and not approve permanent installation. We've heard enough this evening about, even from staff, about some alternatives. So without reflection on the alternatives, we suggest that continuing with the current state is the appropriate decision tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Fran. Why don't you give Kada Tri? She said she hurt her leg, so she may or may not answer this. So. Yes, so why don't we, while you're doing that, Judy, why don't we, Councilmember Keith?
Sure, yeah, as long as you. Good evening.
Hi, Councilmember Carlton. Are you able to hear us okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, Catherine. So we, we just finished a public comment on H1, and I'll quickly summarize. Many residents, particularly at, at, if I got it right, 1600 Oak Grove, I, they expressed their, their concern about needing a, 1160, there we go, expressed their concern about needing access to a loading zone on Oak Grove because they have only one entrance and exit. There is a underground parking garage, but it's very steep. It's very difficult. Currently, a lot of deliveries are taking place on Pine, but it's very difficult for them because of the way the building's constructed for them to get to that. So that's, that's one large issue that, and I know our staff has, had prior to this, had proposed perhaps a loading zone on Pine, but we'll, we'll ask them for reaction on, on what they heard. Oh, it looks like we do have a couple more public comment cards. Do, is that, I'll take...
Absolutely. I'll wait for public comment.
Okay. So we'll go back. Fran Dean of the chamber just made a comment about concerns about, about safety and, and recommendation to keep this on a pilot basis. And, and now I think Betsy Nash, Betsy, come on up, followed by Katie Beruzzi. So hopefully you'll, I tried to bring you up to speed as quickly as I could. Anyway, Betsy, welcome.
Good evening, Betsy Nash. I wanted to strongly support the approval of permanent bike lanes on Oak Grove with the extension to University Avenue and Santa Cruz Avenue. I've been walking around, talking to a lot of residents recently, and have heard strong support from many people who are, where the kids are biking to MA and using the bike routes. But I also had one very memorable conversation with a 72-year-old man who is using the bike routes every day to go to Nativity Church. And he was thrilled that he is now no longer using his three cars, which he showed me, and is actually out of his car, using the bike. He feels like the exercise is doing him wonders, and he was very, very proud of it, and was absolutely thrilled at the bike lanes. And anyway, please approve them. Please continue to look at, at the ability to help the residents with, on Pine Lane, but please go ahead and approve the bike lanes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Betsy. Katie Beruzzi.
Hi, council. Katie Beruzzi. I'm on the Complete Streets Commission, and I'm speaking for myself tonight. I wasn't actually planning on saying anything tonight. I thought the letters and the report looked pretty good, and so I was, you know, feeling pretty confident about Oak Grove and bike lanes in general. I have to say, though, tonight reminded me of how hard it was to get the Oak Grove bike lanes going to begin with. You know, a plan that didn't seem super ambitious, honestly, you know, in the grand scheme of things. We're not asking for bike lanes on every single street, although I think that would be a great idea. It was just one, two. Went through so many different revisions and got hacked away at bit by bit. And it's true that you have to balance the concerns of individuals and of certain corners in the city that are badly designed. It's true that we should never allow, in Planning Commission, apartments or condos like that design at 1150 Pine to be done again. Like, what a horrible design. I'm so sorry. The people living there have to contend with this lack of exit and agress. I was looking at it on Google Maps. I wish, you know, that there were some other way that people could get in and out of their building, and I have a lot of sympathy. At the same time, if we let corner by corner, block by block, parking spot by parking spot, if we let our complete streets plans get compromised, I don't think we'll ever get to the vision that we looked at, that we were looking for to begin with, which is reducing traffic accidents for pedestrians and cyclists, and making it possible for people in our community to get places where they need to go without having to get into a car every time they need to take their kid to school, or to a ballet lesson, or they want to run to the farmer's market or something. And so I just ask you to consider that we're never going to make everybody happy, that nobody's needs will always be met, and that the tough thing about being on council, as I understand it, which is why I'm happy it's you and not I, is that you're responsible for choosing the solution that's going to take us in the right direction, that's going to be the greater good for the community. And so I just wanted to thank you for doing that last time, and I'm sorry people are upset, and I hope that we can work with staff to find solutions. But I urge you to move forward with Oak Grove, and remember the, the bigger picture of what we're trying to do in the community. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Katie. All right, we'll come back up here. Councilmember Keith.
Thank you. So I'd like it if you could put this slide up about, I want to go to Pine Street, the loading zone issue. And I just, I want to thank everybody who spoke tonight, and I think, you know, Katie, thanks for kind of summarizing that. It is, these are hard decisions to make, and you, we are looking to try and make decisions for the whole city, and it's very difficult. And I, when, when you were describing for me, your ingress and egress to your complex, I think, oh my gosh, no, I would never want to see that design that way again because it just doesn't, it's not a good design. But it's there, and now we have to contend with it. And we're trying to make a safe place, and when Betsy tells me a 72-year-old gentleman is also biking there, and we've got, you know, little kids biking there, we don't want cars, because when the 72-year-old gentleman or the kids are going to the church or school or whatever, it makes it very, you're going to get door dinged, or you're going to have accidents, and that's the problem. So I would love to see what you, staff, you have, can you please talk a little bit about what design you had for, I saw a slide about a loading zone on Pine. I kind of want to go there first.
So initially, what we were looking at was putting a loading zone on Pine Street at the corner of Oak Grove. As you can see on the left picture, there is a red curb, and to the right of that red curb is the access to their underground parking structure and the driveway to that. But we were considering putting a loading zone from that point at the red curb up forward to the stop, a little bit closer to the stop sign. Not fully. That way, you know, cars can have the ability to turn right onto Oak Grove, so, so we don't want vehicles going too far ahead. But this was one of the options, as well as, if you look at the right, on, the picture on the right, this is directly opposite of that corner. We were looking at potentially painting this street red, put red curb here, so that way there's better vehicular access when they're turning onto Pine Street from Oak Grove.
I see. Right, and I feel for you. I know these streets are tight, but I am looking at, I'm looking at the picture for the whole city and who's using this, including myself, my family, all the kids going back and forth from the Willows across El Camino to get to Hillview, or going back and forth from the other side of the city, getting to MA. I mean, we're, we're trying to find a solution, and I have to say, I am in favor of extending this to University because that's what people are doing. That's what I do. And I am concerned about people getting door dinged and, you know, collisions, and I think we have many streets in the city. It's okay to do this. And to Fran's point about, gee, where, you know, you're supposed to talk about getting a parking garage, and you're removing this parking, I really think the city needs to look at having subsidized rides with rideshare programs, service providers. And I've brought this up many times, and I'm going to bring it up again. If we did this, and I've seen other cities doing this too, so that you can have subsidized rides for residents to come within the confines of Menlo Park to go places in Menlo Park, I think that's an appropriate thing to do, and I hope that it's something that the city can look at in the future. Because I think if you don't, if you have a lack of parking, you can solve a lot of problems now with using the rideshare programs, and you can subsidize it. Other cities are doing it for their residents, until you have a parking garage or something else, or self-driving cars or whatever is the mobile way of the future. So I feel for you. I do think it's important to have some loading zone somewhere, but I would, I would suggest putting it on Pine. And I know we just had the same issue, a little bit different, but at Drager's, looking at a loading zone. And we, we did not keep it on the bike lane. We moved it off of our main route, and we put it on another street. And not everybody is happy, and I get it. Not everybody's going to be happy, and these are not easy decisions to make. But ultimately, you know, we made this choice to keep the, the bike lanes safe for our, for our residents and for others who are biking through the community. So I, I like what you're looking at doing. I mean, if there are other suggestions that the people who are here tonight, or people who are concerned, stakeholders in this have, that want to give you input on where to put this, that would be appropriate to get more input from them. But I like where you're going with this, especially with this Pine Street right now. I think it is appropriate. I don't, I think we should absolutely have some sort of loading zone somewhere. Because I hear, I've heard all the comments, and I take them seriously when the nurse comes up and speaks, and when, you know... up and speaks, and when, you know, our mom with the baby, and we have disabled people. So I think it's appropriate to put a loading zone, but do it where you're saying, on Pine Street. Let's see. I know you'll have to walk, I know, but it's better than not having any loading zone at all. It's, and it's a poor design, and I would really recommend that the Planning Committee, you know, that we never allow a design like that to go forward again. I think, and I would like to see, in this, making all my comments now, if there are places to put the bollards in, more than just paint, you know, put the bollards in, and I get it, with ecology, it's a problem, but put them in. Just find spots where you can put them in to make this safer. Take it to University, or take it to Santa Cruz on University, and just make this so that we know that this is the route that all these kids are going to take going to Hillview back and forth every day. And also, I want to know, at Station 1300, I thought that they had a flag person during school hours. If they don't, I think they need to have that. So do you know right now if, does anybody know from staff if they have that or not?
I believe that's a no, they don't have a flag person up there.
Okay. I know that they had talked about doing that if it was necessary, and I think, you know, there has to be a conversation with them to see, is this, is this something we need to have at this, while there's still, while there's construction? And this is not onerous. It's something that many construction sites have, it's a person with a flag to make sure that the kids are safe going back and forth during school hours when we know exactly when they're going back and forth. Yeah, so that's what I'd like to see, all those things.
Councilmember Klein.
Thanks. Yeah, these are, these are the funny things, these 12 years, these are microcosms of everything. They're harder decisions than you think. I, you know, it took, took more than 12 years to do Santa Cruz Avenue sidewalks. Woodland sidewalks took us about four years, even longer, and it's probably still the debate, if you go to Woodland, on whether those are working or not. You know, it, you know, we've had, we've redone parking, to Fran's point, what, four, five times since I've been on here? We've tried it short-term, and then we take it out, people don't like it, put it in something else. We have, we have changed and tried, and tried to land on the right result, and parking is the one where I would say, I'm not sure you're ever going to get to that Mars fully. But we did have a parking garage on the table, and we had a mechanism to get there, and we debated it publicly, and we ran away from it because it got political and it became scary, and it was a fear base. People are afraid of garages. We lost those opportunities. And I think that we have to, you just have to make these decisions. You have to find ways to move ahead and also respect the fact that we're constantly in evolution. It's always a trial. That's what we do in the city. If it's not working, are we going to keep it there forever? I mean, it's, we're always, people are in trial, you know, everything's a trial. It, to some degree, when I, every time we've had a hard decision, I always ask, can we review it in six months? The answer's always yes. Can we change it? We have to, if it's not working. Sometimes it takes longer, but, but it does require things like, can we have as a trial, part of the trial, a non-peak white zone area, you know, and signs that say, look, if, you know, after nine, there's, it looks to me in the peak hours, there were 10 bikes. Is there a way to trial that, you know, and, and see if that's in conflict and put enough signage so people know this is not before nine, and if it is before nine, it's going to be expensive? Because I will tell you, people, in my experience, if you're in the business, you're doing contracting work, or you're doing shipping, you're driving around, you really don't care as long as you can get it in and out fast, and so you're not paying attention a whole lot because you think you can get away with it pretty quick. So that's my concern about having that. But trialing everything so that you can see, does it work? Because if it, if it, I drive that, the majority of those kids are gone. Once Hillview starts, they're not going west and the packs that they do before school. So it does shift. The problem is the evaluation, looking at it, it also requires a council to stare down cynics and people who say, why do you keep studying everything? Why are you constantly evaluating everything? You bureaucrats don't, you don't do anything but study. You're darn right, that's what we do, and that's the job. And if you don't like it, you're better off being a gadfly or a cynic, and you can come and be upset and write great emails, but don't be up here because we have to. That's the job. And on top of that, it requires staff time. You got to have dedicated staff time, which means you've got to look at how you pay your staff, how you take care of your staff, all those different things. Again, more cynics, more critics. You have to have staff to be able to do the evaluation and put in the project to get things done timely. It's off balance right now. So can we evaluate? I don't know. Staff's really shorthanded, and that's one of my big concerns, having budget available so that you can make changes, so you can do it quickly, so that if something is wrong, you can react and pivot to it, and ultimately have patience so that we can get through this evaluation. So that's a long way of saying, I think we should continue forward with it. I don't think we should have, we should put in permanent, but I think we also need to understand that once we do this, we're still evaluating. And so we need to look at potentially, is there a way, it does a white zone work at 1160. That building wasn't built in this era, you know, so it made sense when Oak Grove wasn't Oak Grove like it is today. It doesn't make sense now, and so we, things have changed. How do we adapt to that? I wouldn't mind looking at a trial after the peak hours because I do think that it lightens up entirely, but the confusion just, it just may be one where, you know, nobody listens, nobody sees the signs. That's one concern. I also think that if you go all the way to University, which I think, I think when we do these trials, one thing you have to be very clear, and Fran, you have the picture here, is the trial is going, for us to learn, which way are they going to go when you open it up? If you build it, which way are they coming? Do you honestly think you're going to stop these kids from being on Santa Cruz Avenue? No matter what sign you put up? This is done. And we said it when we had the discussion. I mean, I lived in Berkeley, and Solano Avenue has, it's almost the exact same thing, right? It's got these diagonal parking, it's a terrible place to send young bikers down because of people pulling out, can't see when they're backing out, but they're riding. I mean, that's what you're going to do, and your parents can't do anything about it either. I mean, this is the reality. I don't, you know, we can't affect it. They might go shopping. Well, I hope so. Maybe their parents have a credit card in their phone or something, but mine don't. But I think if we go up to University and left, that's where they're going. I'm telling you, I've sat there and drank a whole cup of coffee on the corner, I parked and watched, it's in droves, and they're left on University behind the bank. Now, the point is, we don't have, you know, some special, you know, ownership of a little path through the back of the bank, so, you know, that right turn going on Santa Cruz is horrible. And I would expect we'd have to address it, which is probably not in your budget because you got to study that then, and traffic flow, and you got to take that into consideration. But I am supportive of keeping it moving and continue to track the flow. I don't think it'll change much. They've, they have set the pace on where this is going, and I think it's just going to become more people going the same routes. The sidewalks makes me feel better about Mr. Conway's points. That is a very, it's a, it's a very difficult area, the church exit and enter because people do back out of that, and if you can eliminate the backing out, figure out a way to route that so that people aren't coming out blind, it would be helpful, but the sidewalk is probably going to be your best solution for it. I don't have any answer for the Nativity School, because every school, it's absolute a madhouse, and as safe as you create it, it's still a madhouse. It's just, it looks safer, but it's madhouse, right? It's human behavior, and that's, it's as clean as you can get. It's a long story short to say, keep going. I'd like to see it put in permanent. I don't want the next council to be told that we can't make modifications, that we don't have, I want to make sure we have ample amount of budget to make modifications, that we have people who could track it, and if we don't, then we need to know that and be honest about what we have and don't have, right? So that, so we don't just lay down all the pieces and then go away, and we aren't responsive because I think it's going to be a constant evaluation when there's 12-year-olds on bikes. I appreciate all the work, I really do. I think you guys have done a great job on it.
Councilmember Carlton, if you're on the line, I don't know whether you'd like to make some questions and make comments, or whether you'd like me to go ahead and make my question or my comments, and then you can, since you're coming into the middle of this, and then respond, but I wanted to ask you first if you wanted to go first. Catherine.
Uh, ma-
Sort of heard you there. Do you want to go now, or? Okay, well, we can't hear you, but I will go-
Can you, can you hear, I'm sorry, can you, can you hear me now?
Yes, now I can hear you.
Okay. Um, I was supposed to get Councilmember Klein's side, and I'm, I'm going to miss you, Rich, because I agree with what you're saying in terms of being able to keep looking at things and making sure that we keep improving and we keep working with people to make sure that what we implement is something that's workable and best for the community. And what I see so far, the bike lanes tend to be working very well, and I'd like to see us work with residents and make sure that we have a loading zone and things available to deal with the issues that they need. However, the bike lane itself tends to be functioning pretty well.
Okay, great. Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. So I'll make my comments here. So I do think overall, I've seen generally pretty positive reactions from residents, from kids about having a safe, you know, our whole objective was to make sure we got one east-west relatively safe crossing. I know with the Bike Commission, we, they originally looked at, when it was the Bike Commission before Complete Streets, they looked at Ravenswood. Ravenswood just has too much traffic. And then, and, and the issue with Glenwood is that's too far out of the route for kids who we envision that are coming from, for example, Willows, Lynnfield Oaks, and trying to get over to Hillview Middle School, right? So we're trying to find that balance, and that's why Oak Grove made the most sense. I think we can see from the usage statistics, but certainly for me, just that's the route that I tell my kids that, you know, it's okay to go to Burgess for soccer practice, just use Oak Grove. Don't, don't use Menlo, don't use Valparaiso Glenwood, just, you know, stay on Oak Grove. And it, and it makes me more comfortable as a parent. So overall, I think, I think the pilot is a success, and I think we should make that permanent. Having said that, I think I agree with what I think Councilmember Klein said, is that we need to work on a couple of things, and it continues to evolve. I'll go directly to the Pine Street issue. So I do think, and want to direct staff to Marlon and Hugh to engage with, with the Oak Grove Place Association. I think that having it at least, first step, the, what you proposed on Pine Street itself, loading zone and a, and a red zone on the other side in order to make sure that emergency vehicles can get through, I think that's a good first step, and you've got one loading zone next to one of the buildings. But I'd like to suggest, as I was looking at Google Earth, in a snapshot, on Oak Grove, there's actually a, what appears to be a five-foot between the curb and the sidewalk, there's about five feet of what appears to be some, sort of a brick. It looks like brick on Google Earth, and, and there's a gap between the trees. There may be a possibility to create a cut for a loading zone that might not intrude too much into the bike lane. But I'm judging this from Google Earth, not, you know, not an actual visit, but that might be a way of deconflicting a loading zone at 1160 versus the, the bike lane. I have seen those little sort of loading zone cuts. I don't know if it's wide enough, I don't know if it's long enough. I see Justin expressing some concern, so I don't want to raise expectations, but I do, do think we ought to at least, you know, investigate to see whether that might be a possibility there, that, and that might, might work. So that would be my, my, my strong recommendation to see if there's a way to, to work with the Oak Grove Place residents and come up with something there. Regarding University, Oak Grove, the bike lane extension to University, I have to tell you that's something that back a year and a half ago, you know, I knew we were going to need to, to address it because it's just the logical extension. Trying to go down Crane and then, and then go on to Santa Cruz, particularly when we, right in front of the camper restaurant, you know, we put in the, the outdoor seating. Well, that means at the stop sign, there's a very narrow between the median and the edge of the seating, and it barely gets a car, much less a car and a bike. So in my humble opinion, I think we really do need to look at extending the bike lanes on Oak Grove. Now, the good aspect is that on that part of Oak Grove, between Crane and University, and if you look at that, the north side of the street, they are many, I know that's where my kid's orthodontist is in, but they do have underground parking. So do have, and I rarely see the on-street parking used on that, on that one side. We definitely want to retain, as we have in that whole Oak Grove stretch, the parking on the south side of Oak Grove that are near the businesses, near the park, near, closer to Santa Cruz because those are always utilized heavily. But the, the north side of the street, there is already most of those units that are, that do have, that are professional offices and have some sort of its own parking. However, there's one house on that block that, which has, I think, a 95-year-old lady in there. Let's, you know, reach out and make sure that that, we can accommodate that. The, and then on University, between Oak Grove and Santa Cruz Avenue, the side of the street which is the church, they do have, they've got parking for the bank, there's parking for their staff offices. So I'm not sure, but this is, and there's some other offices there. There's some question about whether or not you might be able to utilize that for, for the continuation of a bike lane that then connects to Santa Cruz, because we really do need to close that gap between Oak Grove and Crane and, and Santa Cruz and the bike lanes there. That is the natural route for Hillview kids, for MA kids, and we really do need to make that continuous and easy. And while I'm glad it's in the Transportation Master Plan, I don't, I don't want that necessarily to hold that up, so if we do have the funding to be able to implement some aspect of that, I think that would be good sooner rather than necessarily in the, waiting for the TMP. I, and I, and I am definitely understand, Fran Dean, your, you know, the concerns about, we chip away at parking, and we, we don't, and we, so we need to- we chip away at parking, and we, we don't, and we, so, we need to certainly move. Now, I think it's, I think even your updated parking stats are showing that during the lunchtime period, we have several lots that are now essentially full, right? We're over that 85% capacity, where it really does make sense for us to, to move forward with designing a parking garage. And so, I highly recommend for the, for the next council, that that continues to be a very high priority item. It was on this last year's list, didn't quite have the capacity to, to, to move it forward, but I think, I think this just illustrates that we do have to have, to move into the phase of designing, designing an actual parking garage. I recall from those discussions previously, that, that if we could get a parking garage that can accommodate 250, that a lot of the employees are using parking permits, we have about 300 or something, at least, parking permits. We want to get, if we can get the employees into the garage, that helps to alleviate the surface parking, and for customers, and it, and it really would do a lot if we can move forward on that. So, I think this just underscores the need to, to move forward. I know that's not specifically linked to this project, but I think it's, it's an important consideration, as Frandine had mentioned, that we need to, we need to address and increase that capacity. So, so again, I am supportive on making the bike lanes on Oak Grove permanent, but also for the project to continue to outreach to the Oak Grove Place Association, and also to extend it to university. So, with that, I don't know if there's a motion?
Well, I'm going to make a motion, but I also want to ask, before I make the motion, because the appropriation amount is 110,000, and with the changes that we're asking for modification, do you think you need a little bit more? Justin's shaking his head, I can't tell.
We do a whole.
Yes.
Yes, thanks. Justin Murphy, Public Works Director. So yes, if the council does want to entertain those two things, and I'll maybe go be specifically. One is the idea for turnout or cutout on Oak Grove, that would definitely require additional funds. The best time to actually do that would be to first study it, but then to fold it into the sidewalk work further down the street. So, we would definitely need to figure out what a cost estimate would be for that, and then additional appropriation. For the additional study of university, extending it down Oak Grove and university, again, we'd be probably better off coming back to you on December 4th, with maybe a consent calendar item for the additional appropriation, otherwise, we'd be giving you a, a wild estimate for tonight, so it's kind of what your preference is, if you would like the cushion tonight, or if you want a, a consent calendar item, come back on the 4th.
I mean, I'd like to give some additional-
Specific to the appropriation.
Yeah, I'd like to give some additional appropriation now, and if you come back on the 4th and you say, oh, this is what we need, if we're off.
Okay.
But I'd like to keep this moving forward.
Then we probably just need a couple minutes, and we can get back to you.
Okay.
So, what we could do is, propose that you make an additional appropriation tonight, and then bring back an informational report on the December 4th agenda, to just let you know, once we have a firmer number, what that number is.
Or if you could put it on the consent calendar, so we can take it off of the consent calendar, have a conversation if we need to.
Certainly.
Okay. Yeah, that would, and then, then Justin, you don't have to do this right now, if you don't want to, but if they can, yeah. So, I'll wait a moment. Oh, but I will reiterate, while I'm waiting a moment, that I understand that, you know, we've had these conversations about the parking garage, and that needs to be done, but I would say, just subsidize a rideshare program now, because a parking garage is going to take years, probably, well, it's already taken, what, 30 years? And so, to study it, and decide where, and fund it, and build it, is not going to be a quick fix. But subsidizing rideshare is much quicker. No, you haven't. That's right. But it begs a, a discussion.
So, in terms of appropriation, additional 50,000 on the design, the curb cut, we'd have to come back with you with a better, better estimate for that one.
Okay. Thank you, Justin. So with that information, I will make a motion, that we adopt Resolution 6470, to approve the permanent installation of bicycle improvements, the project on Oak Grove Avenue, Crane Streets, and University Drive, and appropriate $160,000 from the undesignated fund balance of the general fund, to install the permanent project and award construction contracts, and to also to look at making design improvements that include additional dollars, where you can do it to make it safer.
And loading, design.
And look at the loading and design issue, right? That won't, yeah, just look at it and work with the neighbors to see if that's feasible. And then, I guess you would put that in with the Viambrosa sidewalks, okay?
What was the dollar amount, was that the correct?
160,000.
160, okay. And I'll, I'll second. And before we vote, Councilmember Carlton, did you have any last questions before we vote on the motion?
I, I vote in favor.
All right, so we'll go ahead and, and we'll vote by show of hands, for those of us here, so, I-
So the motion passes.
Okay, great.
Four to zero.
Okay, so, the motion passes, four yes, no, and one recused. All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you for staying with us, and joining us this evening. Thank you very much, you guys, really appreciate your hard work. Let me just, all right, so, I don't think there are any, so on the informational items, I'll just sort of quickly go through that. I won, I simply wanted to suggest to Nick and Dan, I, that's all right, just, so first of all, great work, great to know that we're, it looks like we've got a significant surplus. I know you're still doing the, that's still preliminary year-end, and it's not full CAFR close, but, but I'm glad to see that surplus in there. I would like to suggest that, and recommend that, going forward, and this is also relative to our earlier conversation and study session regarding the, the pension plan and, and future obligations, that when this comes back, I know previously we've talked about a number of things, but, but regarding a recommendation for the, the next council, when you, when you're ready to do that, about, about how to use that surplus, whether, and there's different, different areas, and I don't know how you'd like to do it, but I think you've, I think you want to engage, and, because I know we've talked about some infrastructure projects, you know, parking garage, school district, we've talked about numerous things over the course of this year, and now that we're getting closer to that number, I think it would be good to have your recommendation, that then, we'll go to the, the, when you're ready to come back, and probably with, be the next council, and perhaps in the early in the year, but I think that would be helpful, so that there can be a dialogue about prioritizing those different, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Nick Peguero, Assistant City Manager. I just wanted to provide you and the, and the audience with some, some indication of next steps relative to the fiscal year-end close. So as you mentioned, the information item is a preliminary fiscal year-end close, and does indicate that there is a rather significant surplus in the general fund. We do not expect that number to change in any significant manner, however, as we go, go through the final stages of the audit, there's always a possibility for certain changes. However, consistent with, with past years, what we've done when we present the CAFR to the council, which we expect to occur in January, the auditor will come and make a presentation to the city council, walk through the findings, as, as he has done in prior years. Typically with that, we will provide the council with opportunities or thoughts-
Choices.
Choices on how to use those surplus funds. So we, we do plan to bring that back to the, to the council in January, and I do want to, as long as I have the microphone, I do want to give a big shout out to Brandon Cortez, our managing analyst, who authored the report that's in the packet today. I think that, as you can see, it's an excellent staff report, and we're very fortunate to have him with us.
Great, thank you, Brandon, appreciate it. And I certainly don't have anything, any questions about the Stanford GUP, but, yeah, exactly, I'll have to say, a lot of it is, is in the, in the letter that we sent back to Stanford in response to their modified EIR, and I definitely encourage, encourage, encourage you and our community to, to look at the report. There is certainly a general concern, there's a couple of overriding concerns that I've had in this discussions with Stanford, and I, I've appreciated that Supervisor Joe Semidion from Santa Clara County has engaged the Stanford Subcommittee for the past year, but now, this next year is the brass tacks of, they are going to be they, meaning a Subcommittee of Supervisor Semidion, and I think Supervisor Chavez will be negotiating with Stanford. And we are not directly at the table, and so, one of the issues will be, I know for me, what's nagging me is this net, you know, no net new trips formula, but they apply it campus-wide, and the problem with that is, they could put more, more Margarita shuttles on downtown, but then that allows them to put more traffic on Sand Hill Road, right? And so, I, that's, and, and we're trying to get them to contribute to the transportation infrastructure, because half of the traffic is going through Menlo Park on the north side of the campus, so whether that's on Sand Hill, Alpine Alameda with the county, or even a significant of, of their employees live in the East Bay, in Dumbarton, and, and Willow. So, currently in the GUP, there is really no significant transportation contribution anticipated because of the, the net, no net new trips, and I think that's a problem. And there's a bunch of other things that we've talked about, and, and are in the letter, but I wanted to call that out, just as, as an item, with-
With that, I want to call one thing out.
Yes.
I think you, you addressed the transportation issues very eloquently, I'm not going to go over that, but since I do see Lucy Wicks here, I will say, hello Lucy, and also that I would like to see Stanford engage with us through this GUP on upstream detention, for the San Francisco-Kido Creek Joint Powers Authority and the project that we're doing, because we're moving on to the next phase of, from 101 up to the Pope Chaucer Bridge, and we need to really be engaged and have Stanford involved with us on upstream detention, and I think there is some-
And I remember when I grew up-
Movement by Stanford to do that.
Lake Lagunita used to have water in it during after rainy season, so I don't, but-
Yeah, but just because we've, we've reduced, it's not 100-year flood that we can fund, so we're, we're funding a 70-year, and so we're going to need Stanford to really work with us to do upstream detention, so that we can take it up to the next level, and get people out of flood insurance. That's going to be really important. So, thanks Lucy for being here so late and taking notes.
Great, thank you, Lucy. All right, any other council member reports? Councilmember Carlton, do you have any report?
No, not at this one.
Okay, all right. So, with that, I wanted to make a, a couple of quick announcements. We're not going to have a November 27th council meeting, because it's right after the Thanksgiving holiday, so our next meeting will be December 4th. And, and so, and tonight, I wanted to adjourn the meeting, the meeting in honor of former Mayor D. Toll's, who passed away this last weekend. We all, at one time or another, have, he's mentored a lot of council members over the years, and, and I know we've all gotten his endorsement at different, different points along the way, so we certainly send our sympathies-
[beep]
And I also wanted to adjourn also-
[beep]
... recognition of the wildfire victims from this past weekend in the campfire up in Butte County. With that, the meeting is adjourned, and we'll see you on December 4th.